Morning, um, for the collection of the debt um from a uh home homeowners association. And we have uh the attorneys for the bank and the homeowners association here this morning. Katie McDermott and Paul Ruffin. And I will let them um introduce themselves and then they're gonna kind of tell you the story and the request and uh their perspectives.
So my name is Catherine McDermott. I'm from the law firm of Davis Graham and Stapps. I am here today on behalf of U M B Bank, which is trustee for the bonds issued actually by not by a homeowners association, but by B N C Metropolitan District number two.
Yes, my name is Paul Ruffin and I'm representing the Metropolitan District, B N C number two.
Um, so I learned new information about this yesterday when I got the study session packet. So I want to try to just give a short overview of the situation and then focus in on what we know now and kind of some timing issues that are going to come up on this matter. So as the commissioners may already know, the debt issued by the metro district is in the form of bonds. That is issued for public improvements like streets, sidewalks, parks, and then the district pays it off over time with texts. Um, the bonds are governed by an indenture of trust, which is what I'll call the contract today. And the bondholder is the entity that loaned money to the district for those public purposes. My client, the trustee, is also a party to the contract, but in a more limited way. The trustee receives the tax revenues from the district and distributes them to the proper funds or accounts to pay down the bonds. Um, it's also important to understand that the bondholder is the entity that's entitled to have the bonds paid down. The trustee is empowered to act on behalf of the bondholder, but ultimately at the bondholder's direction. Um, so I wanna quickly just go over the judgment against the district, the county's potential role, what we know about the district's twenty twenty six budget, and then some timing concerns. The judgment against the district was entered in December of last year after a four day jury trial. The jury decided the district had breached the contract with the trustee and the bondholder and awarded the trustee the full amount of damages that we asked for. So judgment entered on December nineteenth of last year. And the district hasn't made a single payment towards that dis- judgment yet. The court also in April of this year ordered the district to pay the trustees' costs of litigation and pre and post judgment interest. So that's all now part of the judgment against the district. The district did appeal costs and interests in May, but then ultimately decided to dismiss that appeal. And then just last month, the trial court said, okay, the trustee can go ahead and enforce the entire judgment at this point. But the initial judgment was entered in December of last year. As far as the county's potential role, um, by statute, as I mentioned in my letters, if a metro district fails to pay a judgment, then the Board of County Commissioners is to levy a judgment mill levy to collect taxes for the judgment. Um, a couple things to point out. That statute applies if the district fails to pay the judgment or provide for payment of the judgment for any cost. It doesn't imply intent or wrongdoing. It's just if the judgment isn't getting paid, then this statute kicks in. Um, also, it's important to know that it's not a permissive statute. If the metro district fails to provide for payment, then the Board of County Commissioners shall implement this mill levy. There's not any discretion. Uh fortunately for you all, there are no factors to weigh or consider. It's just something that has to be put into place. The maximum amount of that judgment mill levy is ten mils. And my understanding is that that is projected to generate about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars next year. The full amount of the judgment as of today is approximately three hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. So because that ten mil levy wouldn't pay off the entire judgment in twenty twenty six, that then becomes the minimum that can be imposed also. It has to be ten mils. So what was news to me in the study session packet yesterday was the district's twenty twenty six budget. That wasn't available on their document library yet, so that was something I saw for the first time yesterday. Um, and from that budget, it looks like the district currently intends to go ahead and impose the ten mil levy themselves. Uh, what I wanna be clear about is the trustee and the bondholder are not asking for two mil levies. We just wanna make sure the one is put into place in twenty twenty six. You know, it's been almost eleven months and there have been no payments whatsoever. So that's why the timing is so crucial to the trustee. Um, so the twenty twenty six budget is good news. It looks like that's moving forward. But there does have to be certainty about that ten mil levy being put in place. Um, yesterday we contacted Mr. Ruffin, asked for the signed board resolution, and he did send that over yesterday evening. So we have that resolution adopting the budget now. The last piece for the mill levy, to be certain, is that it is certified to the county. And I'm sure you all are familiar with those certifications, what they look like. You know, they get submitted from the metro district. The statutory deadline for that is December fifteenth. But that's where our timing concern comes in, because we just need to make sure it happens this year. Um, so what I'd like to understand today um from the district is how early that certification can be submitted so that it takes it off the county's plate and we know for sure the mill levy is in place. And from the county, you know, what I'd be interested to understand is what is the latest a public hearing could take place to get the judgment mill levy set if the district doesn't certify it? So that's just our goal. We understand the district's trying to do the right thing and impose the mill levy. But because we need to have that certainty, um, I wanna make sure we talk through the the timing issues today. Um, I know that other questions came up and I'm happy to to answer them if if you all need more on the process, but that was all I wanted to cover.
Steve.
Why couldn't have this been handled with a meeting with our staff? Why did it have to be a study session?
Um, I actually don't know that. We've been corresponding with the county attorney's office. Um, I think the mill levy itself requires a public hearing, so that might maybe why folks wanted a study session first, but.
Yeah, that that was our thought. Um, this would have to go to public hearing and you all have to take a public action to approve it. And we thought for public transparency purposes, having a study session that was available to the public with the actual request and you all being able to answer question, ask and answer questions, um, so that it didn't all come up as a surprise at a public hearing. You know, this is not a request of county staff. Um, it is a statutory obligation the county has. But we thought it was important that you all hear from the parties actually requesting the relief.
Just a clarification then. Today is really anticipating because it could be a potentially explosive issue if it came up on some sort of consent. And then all of a sudden we have the room filled with some folks that are asking for it. And then, of course, then we're saying, why didn't we have a conversation about this earlier? So I could I could understand the potential uh transparency and political uh rationale behind having a study session on something that we have absolutely zero discretion on. Like, so from that, from that standpoint, I can understand that. Somebody who has a concern, they could come and look at this. But from what I'm hearing in summary is, this is kind of like if we're an employer or if we're a bank and in this case, we're the county, but we'd have to garnish some sort of wage or some sort of like collection on behalf of some other external entity who's collecting from someone else. And in this case, it's the U M B Bank has won a judgment and they need to collect. And since we are the stewards of the money that's passing through, this is basically like a garnishment kind of gonna lay up against that district simply because we're the ones that control the levers, but we don't have any discretion on those levers and dials in this situation.
That's exactly right.
Completely agree. Love, love meeting you. This is great. So good to see you. Also, seems like you got your laws sorted out. I appreciate the context, but feels like we don't have a lot of discretion. And so while I appreciate the context, I trust our attorney to thoughtfully put together the the narrow obligation that we have and do our work.
And I, we also wanted to give the the metro district, I apologize for calling you an A T A, an opportunity if you did wanna have to say anything on the subject.
Oh, and happy to answer any questions that may come my way. But I think everything that I've heard is in completely accurate, including the lack of discretion if and when this may come before the county. Um, we're just not there yet because the district is trying to follow the law and trying to do everything it can. U M B is understandably concerned. If we fail to ultimately do that, uh then that does become a timing issue because if our deadline extends through December fifteenth, U M B has asked for us to accelerate. We will try to do that. We're a government, so we have our own processes we have to go through. But the window becomes quite tight at some point in time. And so I think it is reasonable for you all to meet, for you all to get that heads up. Um, as Ms. McDermott pointed out, things were late breaking even as late as yesterday. So we are working together, um, but decided to take advantage of the opportunity this morning as well to come before you just so not only the public knows, but you know, just in case we are all scrambling back before you with a much tighter deadline. And so that's what we're trying to do, I think, this morning is answer any questions you have so that it truly can be non-discretionary administrative if the county ever has to take action.
And just to answer your question, our last meeting of the year will be December sixteenth, that something could be adopted. Um, so we would need to know a few days ahead of that at least, um, if you need us to impose the mils and we could try and get. Meredith will have a a resolution ready to go, so if we needed to do that, we can.
Okay, so that could, at that December sixteenth meeting, the mill levy could still be put in place for twenty twenty six?
I believe so. I think that would work probably because they coordinate with the assessor's office to make sure that. Because I always understood everything had to be done by the fifteenth, so they have time to do their thing, push the tax forward to.
I was just a little bit worried about certification of the levies occurring before that public hearing date, but we probably need some time to discuss that.
We certify ours early because we do it with the budget, but the other government entities have until the fifteenth. Um, and again, I think that's our own deadline.
The hearings on December sixteenth.
So we may, I mean, maybe we should aim for.
Target the one before that is what I was.
And from the district side of things, I I can represent to everybody in the room. We will try um to get that certification done sooner. Um, there is six weeks between now and then. We should be able to accomplish that. I honestly, I think the only thing that would prevent it would be mass exodus from my board that they're all on extended vacations. I I don't think that that will be the case. Um, so we will make every effort from our point of view to get it done before the fifteenth. So we're not just that bumped up against things.
Is the meeting before the sixteenth, would that be seven days prior, just so we're tracking this?
And so again, if you wanted us to move, our normal deadlines would be much more extended. But I'm looking at the clerk and asking her permission that we could get it in. Um, you know, we probably need at least a couple days though.
So the Friday before, which is the fifth of December.
Yeah, um, the request was made yesterday for December first. I will keep that as kind of my self-imposed deadline and we'll try to operate within those times.
That was my only comment is Heidi, I was like, the last time we could take action this year is gonna be December sixteenth. After that, we're.
Good.
Get all done by then.
We will try. I don't see any reason why we won't make that.
So again, we are not, the Board of County Commissioners are not raising anybody's taxes.
No.
Any taxes that are raised from members or people living in this district are a result of the lawsuit.
Yes.
That happened between the district that represents those residents and that the the bondholders.
Yes.
Based on the, so if you read the complaint, uh breach of contract and other promises that were made. Um, if they have any concerns, they need to take it up with their board and the manager of their district and not with the five of us. Does that sound good?
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for being here.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm going to go ahead and kick us off and then hand this over to Byron. As we dig into a debrief and some decision making about our special events programming. You may recall at our retreat in August, one of the top priorities that we identified was taking a look at our special events and specifically the fair, the opening of the fair, sort of the scope of the fair. And also just thinking about what kind of fair do we want to offer going into next year? As we had conversations about having a broader look at all of the parks programming and projects that was going to be coming probably January-ish. We did identify that we needed to have a conversation about special events earlier because we have to start planning and we need to understand what our budget direction is. And so we are doing this presentation today, but we are also coming back with that big picture overview of the parks projects in a couple of months. And so this is happening maybe a little bit out of order, but the fair is kind of time sensitive because believe it or not, we already start working on contracting and setting up some of the fair this early in the year. And I think the big questions that we really want to talk with you about today are really around what kind of fair experience do we want to offer to be sustainable, that's within a budget that we're able to manage? And that delivers the value that you all want for the fair event. We'll have some brief discussion about the other events, the attendance, some of the outcomes from other events, and some options for how we want to deliver the fair. But this is an ongoing conversation, you know, that we probably should be having all the time is just making sure that our residents are, you know, valuing the fair and that they're meeting the intent that you all have when we're talking about priorities for this kind of event. There's also some operational considerations for any event that we have. And we want to make sure that we're clear about what it takes for us at a baseline level to operate a safe event. That no matter what we deliver, there's going to be some costs when it comes to staff, when it comes to rentals, payment, that kind of thing. And so how we manage costs and expenses always going to be a consideration. So even if we scale back everything, there's still a baseline that we have to keep so that we can manage a safe event. So we'll be talking a little bit about that today. So just wanted to give a broad umbrella overview of what we're talking about today and I'll hand it off to Director Fanning.
Thank you very much, Dion. So thank you very much for your time today. I know you guys have a lot going on and there's a lot going on in the community. Election Day yesterday and hopefully some good changes to come out of that. But yes, we wanted to talk about events, fair and events with you today. And we last presented to you back in April and talked about where we were at with events at that point. What it looked like for last year and we wanted to talk about this year. And I think one of the big drivers, as Dion mentioned, is we have a budget, but our budget doesn't quite cover the way we've offered our events the last couple of years. And so we want to talk about what you want to see and then how do we fund that and how to put that together. And I think to Dion's point too, and I think it's important to emphasize that these aren't my events, they're not Courtney's events. These are the community's events and really you're, you're just the decision makers for the community. So we want to understand what it is that that you want to see out of us and then we want to do our best to execute them to the best of our abilities. So we'll provide you with a lot of data on the fair. In this presentation, we have answers to some of the questions that you asked, have asked previously, both at your retreat and also at the last study session. And we also have data and statistics to kind of talk about what we've understood from the community about how they feel about the fair. And then what we offer and what that looks like and how it performs. So you'll have all the information to be able to give us good direction to, to move forward and, and do the best job that we can for the community. So with that said, the fair, why do we have the fair is the first slide. So the fair was established in 1904 in Brighton where the old Adams County Municipal Building was, that was the fairgrounds. The very first fair had the Democrats and Republicans in a tomato fight, which was kind of fun. And yeah, it's maybe a little bit more serious today, but that was what it was like in 1904. We bought the fairgrounds in 1960 and moved the fair over in 1969. And so most of the buildings that are in place at the fairgrounds were in place by 1969 to support that fair. So required, there, there really isn't anything that's required at the fair. There are some elements that 4-H needs the structure of the county fair in order to then go on and compete in the state fair. And so a lot of the competitions and the judging and the projects, projects that they do, the way it's set up, it's not in statute, it's not required, but it's the, the, the launching pad for them to be able to compete at the state fair. And of course they enjoy competing at the county fair as well. And I typically attend their 4-H award ceremony every year for everything that they give out for all of the kids that attend the fair. And it's really well attended and there's an awful lot of excitement from the kids about how they participate in the fair. And Courtney could probably speak to that better than I can, having a 4-H background. People love it. Several factors point to the fact that a large cross section of the community continues to support the fair. Attendance remains high, social media commentary remains positive. And the data collected in last year's quality of life community survey supported the fair's popularity. And I have a couple of slides where I'll, I'll show you some of that feedback that we received in that, that survey. The fair celebrates our past, our heritage, tradition, our agricultural roots. And really at the heart, it really continues to focus on community. Most people in the community kind of look at it as the kind of last hurrah of summer. It's when you kind of go back to school, summer's over, you know, there's no more vacation. And people love to come and kind of let it all hang out for a few days and then it's back to business. And that's kind of, kind of how people experience the fair. I know my family has experienced the fair that way for 20 years. It's a melting pot. Some of the some of the events that we, do I need to start over? Some of the, the other events that we support are obviously focused on one demographic or another. The fair really kind of catches everybody. There's something for everybody at the fair. And also change, from a change perspective, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware, we really haven't changed anything since I've been here. In 2015, the board gave direction to staff to add concerts to the fair. Prior to that, there really weren't concerts.
At least in the years leading up, that we used to do them.
Okay, yeah. But prior to 2015, that we hadn't done them for a while, I guess. And, and I don't have that history. Right. And so we decided at that point to, to build concerts back in. And so we've been, we've been doing that since. The only change we've really made, and this is listening to feedback that we're getting from the community is we eliminated the truck pull and added a second day of demo derby. We saw the truck pull kind of numbers go down. Truck pull also is extremely involved, especially for Brian Staley's staff in terms of the work they have to do to, you know, keep up and redo the course for every heat. So, you know, it looked like it could save us a little bit of money and it was kind of dwindling a little bit in popularity. And the demo derby continues to be popular. So that was the, really the one change we've made since I've been here. Other than that, the other change we've made is to really focus on customer service. And so we see the numbers have increased significantly. That's not been anything we've specifically tried to drive. What we've really tried to do is deliver the best possible service we can and be welcoming to everyone. When I started in 2019, we had no less than 10 complaints of discrimination per day at the fair. And it was our, largely our Hispanic community was complaining and I was handing out carnival tickets like they were candy, trying to kind of satisfy customers that were really mad because they felt like we treated them poorly. We didn't print anything in Spanish because previous at some regime, a few years before that wouldn't let anything be printed in Spanish, it was only English. So we immediately changed that for the next fair. And, and everything was printed in English and Spanish, including our maps. And we also, we put Spanish speaking staff in prominent places like the information booths and the ticket sales areas. And in the last three years, we've not had one complaint of discrimination. So I, I think when you make those kinds of changes and you celebrate your community, people really want to be a part of it. And so that customer service has been a huge focus since I've been there. And we've really seen improvements with it. And I think that along with luck, I mean, sometimes it's the band that we lucked out and got that brings in a lot of people, but, but you can see a base steadily growing. And I think the, the customer service and the focus on community has really done that. Plus Courtney has done an amazing job of listening to what the community wants. So the free stuff that we offer is more relevant and stuff that people enjoy, like the, the, the pig racing and the dog show. The stuff that we did in the past was okay, I'm glad we're still recording.
I'm having difficulty with my glad we're still recording.
But at the end of the day, the, she's listened to what the community wants and likes and she's very connected to the community. And I think the things that we've offered have been more relevant, that's brought in more people. And those free things have been a strong focus for us. So you, you know, most people are not going to come and just do the free stuff, but they might get a little food and just do free stuff, or they might listen to a concert in the free tent and then attend a couple of the free shows and maybe spend money on one wristband or something. So it's still an affordable event for the community and especially when you see prices skyrocketing for everything else in the area. And for the concerts that we do do, we don't get big acts partially because we don't charge much, you know, our, our cost for those concerts are still really low. You can spend more money if you want on the VIP experience, but you know, for between 20 and 30 bucks a ticket for a concert, try to find that somewhere in the metro area. I mean, names I've never heard of that play at Red Rocks all the time are 200 bucks. It's, it's amazing. So. So it's, it's the value, I think, as well. So with that said, the last thing I'll say on this slide is all fairs have some level of county support. Some have a nonprofit that run it with county dollars or county support. Some run it through the county like we do and we run it in cooperation with CSU Extension and 4-H. So the way we do it, I think, is kind of the norm, but there are other ways it's done. But all of those ways include some level of county dollars. So one of the questions were what are the components of the fair? And so we have them listed here. Obviously the, the animals, the 4-H components, which again, not required, but if it's not done, then the kids can't compete at the state fair. So it's, it's the, it's the piece that's probably the most key in terms of 4-H. The carnival, important to note with the carnival, we don't pay anything for the carnival. The carnival actually makes money and pays us. So, you know, based on the number of people that show up, they generate income, they pay us. So the grandstand events, which includes concerts, demo derby, the chariata, Mexican rodeo on Sunday and a professional bull riding, just PBR. Food and beverage vendors, local and commercial vendors, our free tent entertainment, also known as the Budweiser tent or the beer tent, where we have kind of smaller acts and we have kids performing at times. And like we had School of Rock last year and the year before, and that's kind of a fun thing. And some karaoke and that sort of thing. So it's more of like a, a little bit of a community area. The free grounds entertainment I mentioned, the pig racing, the dog shows, the baseball guy. But then also the entertainment we have for Kids' Day and Senior Day, the breakfast, the, the vendor show, the kids bouncy area with, with free rides for the kids. And then parking and shuttle buses and security and emergency services, obviously police, fire. Also lighting for night. Uh, also lighting um, for night, uh, restrooms, um, and those sorts of things are all, all part of what we include. And so the next slide gets to that. Uh, quality of life, uh, community survey from last year. And uh, as you look at the data that is on this slide. Um, out of the people that responded to that survey, more people attended the fair than didn't. Um, and then the people that have attended the fair loved the entertainment, the food and uh, visiting the animals. Um, and then they were about fifty fifty on concert attendance. And you can see how their experience was, um, almost everybody was excellent, very good or good in terms of their experience. And they, about three quarters or more than three quarters of respondents um, plan to attend again in the next five years. So. Um, many people plan on coming back and we hear that as we give people. Rides on the, on the golf carts to their car, to the shuttle bus, um, they'll tell us, yeah, we're going to be back tomorrow. We'll be back next year. So. And then the next one is kind of a comparison of many different service offerings that the county has. And just highlighting that, um, uh, believe it or not, motor vehicle registration scored really well. Uh, animal shelter uh, scored really well and so did the fair and fairgrounds scored really well. In terms of um, how uh, people perceive services that they're offered by Adams County. This was the community survey that was across the board for everything, not just park stuff. And um, on that survey, a slide I didn't show is eighty-two percent of all respondents. Say they use either the fairgrounds or they attend the fair annually. Um, which is pretty high number. We, we know our numbers are good for um, attendance at the fairgrounds. Um, but this just kind of confirms some of what we knew. And here's some demographic data um, that we collect now that we have the placer. System which has been excellent to be able to get us some real time data on our users and who attends. And um, so these, this is kind of the demographic breakdown of who attends the fair. Um, as you can see, it's not that dissimilar from our Adams County demographics. In terms of how we break down by, by race. Um, and you can also see by zip code, that's the top fifteen zip codes, which represents about sixty-two percent. Of fair attendees. Um, twelve of those are Adams County zip codes. There's two Broomfield and one Weld.
And so you know, the Denver ones are actually unincorporated Adams.
Right, and that's why we have the county as Adams, yeah.
Great, but yeah, eight oh two three three, that is so weird. That's totally Thornton.
Oh, the, the specific, I'm sorry, I was looking at.
And eight oh two two nine, that's where I live, that, that, we always get mail that says Denver. So that's interesting. So actually eight oh two two nine and eight oh two three three are largely. Well, eight oh two two nine is about half and half, but it's a lot of South Thornton and eight oh two three three is a lot is south.
If they're identified correctly, if you look at the county, those Denver cities are county Adams.
They are, right, but I'm just telling you where they are.
Yeah, it's really weird. When we first looked at this, we had, we had to assign the county. Um, because the, the way this system works is it doesn't assign a county for you. So we went through and looked and we're like, even though it says Denver fifteen times, it's really Adams County. So. Um, and it's unincorporated, obviously.
It was like eight oh two three four, I'm pretty sure it's Westminster.
Even like Henderson.
Eight oh two three four is South Thornton, unincorporated Adams County.
Yeah, but I know it shows on Westy too.
Eight oh two three.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I lived, off by Welby.
They're messy. They're kind of all over the board.
And now that we've talked about zip codes, you know, we're not the post office, so we don't assign cities.
Understand where, where, because when I first glanced at the cities, I was like, what is going on? But it, that's, this helps.
Yeah, if you look at it by county and then the, the chart uh, that shows county comparison, obviously most of the attendees are Adams County. Okay, we're back, back. The two highest um, counties that are not Adams County that attend the fair are Denver and Jeffco. Two counties that do not have a county fair. Um, and, and those two are higher than Weld in attendance. So. It's good to have this data because it's really not what you would think, but when you really dig into it. It gives you some good information to be able to work with.
Only some people would always jab at me and say, oh, it's just people from Weld. That's clearly not the case.
Right.
I know who've had that and that's why I kept pushing for the placer data because like. People will say things.
Good job.
Good job saying things. Even when you add up across the categories, it's still two thirds Adams County.
I mean, we can do this for all of our events.
They do now.
We do, yeah, yeah.
Good job, Steve.
Trying to give you a softball like.
Yeah, so it's, it's really good information and it is good to see that we're largely serving Adams County and Adams County loves the, the event. So, this next one, I gave you a replacement page for this. I had one number that was off as I was going through the numbers. With Dion, we saw a number that looked a little bit strange and I looked it up and it was wrong, so corrected it. It's the data point for twenty twenty-one on the chart on the right, the actual revenue and expense. Uh, the twenty twenty-one expense number was wrong, so I've, I've corrected that. But you can kind of see a trend where costs have continued to escalate and our budget is really kind of remained flat. Um, and revenues have also more or less remained flat. Um, we don't have twenty twenty-five a hundred percent on here yet. Twenty twenty-five revenue was better. We did raise some prices like we talked to you about in April, um, and charged for the Wednesday concert. However, um. You know, as Dion mentioned at the outset, eh, we can't really raise prices enough to cover. The cost increases and at the end of the day, um, eve- if, as we reduce things, revenue also reduces. And both revenue and expense affect the general fund. So if we have less revenue, that's the same thing as spending more expense. And when we get into some of the scenarios, I'll kind of explain that as we walk through it, but. You can see there's a, there's obviously, there's a structural issue. Um, but that's always going to be there. We're never going to make enough revenue to cover this event. It's most. Types of community offerings, they're just not set up to do that. It's community benefit. And so here's some, some grandstands data and these are, these are, again, it's a, it's a lot of data as I mentioned at the beginning. Um, but this shows a lot of the, um, these are ticket sales at the different nights. And most of it is apples to apples because we really didn't change anything until uh, twenty twenty-five. So nineteen through twenty-four was essentially the same event for all of those years. And so you can see um, kind of an apparel, comparison across the board. Wednesday night was the free concert from nineteen to twenty-four. And you can see there were, there were, you know, up to ten thousand tickets downloaded. However, we know we probably had about twenty-five percent of that actually showed up. And that was our dilemma because we'd have to staff for ten thousand people and twenty-five hundred would show up. And, and prep and have enough food for and, and all of that. And it became a challenge for us. Um, Thursday is um, up until twenty-three was a concert and then. We, we changed it to a second night, I'm sorry, until twenty-four was a concert. We changed it to a second night of demo derby in twenty-five. And you can see the high water mark there is twenty-three and that's when Jordan Davis came. And he, he hit that year. And so we booked him when he wasn't a big name yet and he became a big name during the year and came to our fair and. Uh, we had more people in the, in the grandstands than that seventy-six hundred, I can attest to. Yeah.
Before she got big.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
You kept them what, you, you put in the contract early before they hit it big and it's almost like, like Jordan here.
Yeah, which is, which is part of why we're.
Years later, you're like, uh, contracts, you still have to come.
And in twenty-four, that was Nate Smith and same thing, he had a really great summer. And so that's why that ten thousand.
Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
Oh, cool. Oh, okay.
And Friday's always been demo derby straight through and um. We cannibalized it a little bit in twenty-four, but we think there's a lot of room to grow it. Uh, people were really excited. A lot of people didn't. Look at our, our, even though we advertised it everywhere, people didn't quite catch it and showed up Thursday or like, oh, you're doing demo derby, great, we'll go. So. You know, I, I think we'll see, if, if we are able to keep it intact, we'll see it grow. Um, Saturday was the truck pull up until twenty-four and then we went with a concert in, and PBR in twenty-five. And then Sunday, of course, is uh, the chariata, Mexican rodeo and the banda concert. And really the band that we get for the banda concert really drives the numbers. And it was a really popular band in twenty-five. So you can see we had a big jump in uh, attendance at that concert. So some four H data and some volunteer numbers. Um, you can see what is coming with four H across the years. For the most part, fairly consistent. Um, the biggest numbers that probably jump off the page are goats have gone up significantly over the years. Maybe you know why Courtney, but I don't.
Uh, smaller animals like a goat, a sheep, um, are less expensive for a family to raise. Uh, things like horses and steers are very, very expensive to raise and maintain. And all of the things that come along with that, whereas sheep and goat, you can keep in a backyard that's very low cost. Um, and little kids can show sheep and goat. So it's just become a very popular thing for young kids to get into.
You don't hurt anyone.
Yes.
True, yeah. Less of a lies developing your, um. Family and consumer science is another one that has increased and that's kind of their uh, cake decorating, dressmaking. Uh, pie baking, those kinds of things. Um, that, that four H does and it's all kind of categorized together. So there's a lot of little categories within that number. But that's continued to rise over the years. And that's as they've moved a lot of their programs to schools and gone a little bit more urban in their approach. They've gathered more, more kids that would be interested in some of those things. So that's kind of worked to their advantage. Um, and then volunteers, you can see the numbers have continued to go down over the years, which um. Is challenging and we um, for one, have to work harder to get volunteers um, coming to our events. It's, it's difficult. Um, and for two, we've had to reduce number of volunteers that we have staffed at certain elements. Or modify hours that we have certain volunteer activities open or move them around. And um, in order to make ends meet, we've also had to um, to have more temp staff. To, to make up for the difference at times as well. So we continue to offer things to the community. So. It's, it's a challenging thing and it's something that we've. I, I, in talking to my peers, they've experienced across the board. It's tougher and tougher to get volunteers uh, today. And again, another, another numbers chart. These are, these are sale, uh, actual sales, revenue data. Um, these numbers are for fair only. And so um, if you add up these revenue elements, it's not going to give you the. The revenue numbers that we're going to talk about for the fair here in a minute. Because they don't include the rentals and the buildings and some of the other um, events, uh, liquor sales at some of the other events. That would also be revenue for uh, our events division, but you can kind of see trends across time. Um, with liquor, um, kind of across the board. Uh, very high in twenty-three and twenty-four as those numbers were very high up and then a little bit lower in twenty-five. The bottom number is the livestock sale and some of you may hear from four H from time to time. That they're just not getting enough money out of their animals. Um, you can see here, it has gone up and down over the years, but it's trending up. They had a really good year. With their livestock sale and those kids get this money. So it's when somebody comes and bids on a steer. The kid that raised the steer gets the money. So um, you can see uh, where that. Where those livestock numbers are and the good news is they're.
There's no interruption to the live stream. We double checked that and IT has been monitoring the wifi connectivity issues. I think there's an issue with. Zoom, Erica, is that right?
Um, yeah, Jeremy said we just need to, they'll reach out to Zoom.
So that's kind of annoying reminder, but it's not interrupting people's ability to watch from remotely, I just wanted to know that.
And you can also see sponsorship, you know, sponsorship is challenging, especially right now in this climate, but. Um, Courtney and her team have been able to continue to, to see small increases in sponsorship, so.
Sponsors.
United Power.
And we have heard United Powers is um, it may struggle to sponsor us at the same level next year. So if any of you are talking to them, please feel free to let them know that we need them.
We had a very good conversation with them last week. We also gave them some of this data to show that their. Clients are coming to the fair too. So it was a good conversation. Um, but yeah, as Byron said, that there's conversations around that for them too.
Um, and I know sponsorship is hard across the board right now. Uh, the money's just not there. So um, cost uh, escalations, um, they've escalated significantly in the last six years. Equipment and services have gone up seventy-two percent since twenty nineteen and the budget's gone up twenty percent. Um, and some of the examples of that, labor has gone up two hundred and twenty-eight dollars between nineteen and twenty-four. Came down in uh, twenty-five because we worked on bringing it down in twenty-five in, in order to make ends meet. Like we talked to you about in April. However, in twen- in twenty-four, um. Uh, that increase, a lot of it had to do with minimum wage. So we were paying people eleven dollars and ten cents an hour in nineteen. And we're paying them twenty dollars an hour today. Um, in addition to that, we've seen the attendance increase at the fair. And, and also seen volunteers go down. So we've needed more staff to kind of make ends meet in terms of uh, providing. Customer service and, and being able to do the setup and the takedown and the cleanup for the fair over the years. Equipment costs for lights, generators and the variable message boards that we put around town. Telling people where to turn and, and which roads closed. Uh, those are up sixty thousand dollars in that nineteen to twenty-four time period. Stage production's up fifty-five thousand. The parking company fees are up fifty-four. Brighton Fire used to donate their services to us and now charges thirty thousand dollars uh, a year for the fair. And shuttle buses are up twenty-one thousand, which makes sense because we've seen the use of those shuttles significantly increase in the last five years. Um, we have been able to increase sponsorship, so it obviously doesn't even kind of make a dent in, in costs that have escalated. And this slide's really um, saying, um, we've worked with budget and finance to separate the fair out. So moving forward. We're going to have better information about the fair and better information about the events. And then um, we've, we've worked with budget and finance to develop some options for you. Before we talk about those options, here is the attendance and you've seen this information before. Looks a little different because um, uh, placer changed their formula. Previously, um, placer only counted you if you showed up somewhere and stayed still for ten minutes. So they, they didn't, which was weird. They didn't count you as an attendee if you're moving. So that meant our, our trail numbers were lower and um, our event numbers are low because. Not many people show up and stay in one spot for ten minutes, you know, unless they're at the concert or, or doing something specific.
But even if you're at the concert, people are dancing and moving and walking around, like that doesn't make a lot of sense.
It doesn't. And so they changed it this year, didn't tell us. So we're pulling numbers and all of a sudden all the numbers are inflated and we pulled previous years like, what's going on? So we had them explain it to us. So the trends are the same. It's just the numbers are different. So.
It also changed this year, twenty-five, you're so spread out in everything you're doing on the fairgrounds that you are moving more.
Yeah.
You know.
Absolutely.
Fair recognizes that we changed, which is different feedback that we could talk about, but.
Yeah.
Like it, it literally the layout created more movement.
Did, yeah, that absolutely did. And you can see um, the, the pride, Stars and Stripes fair and Festival Latino attendance numbers. Um, Stars and Stripes continues to increase. Obviously, we know that there were, some of what's going on politically affects pride and, and Festival Latino. And, and we knew that kind of going in. Um, and fair, it affected to a degree. Another thing that impacted fair was weather. It, it always does. And so. Four of the five days had a forecast of seventy percent rain. We didn't really ever get that much rain. But we did have the forecast every day and that certainly scares some people away. So.
Well, and there was that weird incident with the, the youth.
Yes.
Issue, but you know, the takeover.
Which we really, um, one of the reasons that, that we nominated Travis, um, the, in the sheriff's office for. Employee of the season was we thought they did an amazing job handling that and working with us and you to keep you informed during it. So. Um, well deserved and we're really appreciative of the support we received from the sheriff's office this year. As well as all the other departments. I mean, we can't put it on without comms, facilities, public works. Um, the animal shelter comes to the fair every single year. Uh, community safety and wellbeing staff comes and then staff from all the departments come and help us with volunteering as well. And then staff from all the departments come and help us with volunteering as well.
That, just to go back, I mean, we're not going to argue the numbers. I've, looking at Festival Latino, I thought the first year attendance was around ten thousand, second year is around twelve thousand.
This is due to that change in how they're counting people. So apparently, six thousand people were.
When they attended.
Yeah, they at some point stayed still for ten minutes. I mean, that was, that's the explanation.
Because we've now. The previous did not walk.
Historical data?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause they keep the data forever.
They changed their.
Change the overall historical.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the number.
This is more accurate then because it.
This is more accurate because it includes if people just came and walked the entire time, it counts them and it didn't previously.
Okay.
I was, it was, it was upsetting and confused to us as well. It took us a minute to get used to, but unfortunately, but again, like I said, the trends remain the same. The, the up and down kind of stays the same, it's just the numbers are different.
Cause we don't have one outlier year, they, they corrected all of the data.
They did, they went back and redid it.
We wouldn't have expected that, that's interesting.
Yeah. Yeah, cause when we started pulling them, we pulled one year and um, and I said, wait a minute, we need to go back and, and look. And we did and they had done all the years, so at least it's, we, we have good history with it. And so recommendations, uh we've got, we've got four options um and, and a fifth uh alternate of one of the options. Um, it's really, again, this is kind of what, what do you want to do, what do you want us to do? And the idea with these options, what, the way we looked at it is what could we offer? What have we heard in feedback from you have? So if we, if for example, remove concerts completely, what does that do? What does it do to revenue, what does it do to expense, what does it do to the numbers overall? And so with the four options, the fourth option that will show you ha- has the least impact on the general fund. They're all going to be needing um a more support from, from the general fund. Um, but the last option that we show is the least amount. There's not really an option where we can do the fair and not have an impact on the general fund. Because if we reduce um expense, we're reducing revenue also, just because we're reducing things that we offer. So if you keep that in mind as we go through, we'll go through the options and i- i- it's, it's a little complicated, but I, I just wanted to kind of give you that.
I'm just gonna add, you know, because we've wrestled with these options quite a lot and just kind of talking about that piece. And we definitely wanted to hear from you all on thinking about how prioritizing the experience that folks are having. There is an inflection point with how much things cost and what's available and what's accessible for people to participate in and how much they can only pick up the cost of, right? And so, you know, we can do things that raise revenue, but it definitely will discourage some attendance from folks who don't have the means to participate in that. Um, but if the priority is to try and make the fair as cost neutral as possible, that's one lever, right? But it does impact attendance, so there's just this um kind of tipping point um as we raise costs. The same on the other side, if we offer more free offerings, I think we have more attendance, we have more accessibility. But it requires a lot of operational support and there's an expense on that side to have more staff, more people come. And so it, it's hard to get it right, but that's something that we're trying to take into account as we're looking at the different options.
And so the first one we, we have before you is, is no grandstands. So this would take away everything we do in the grandstands, no concerts, no demo derby, no PBR and no grandstands events on Sunday, so no chariata, no Mexican rodeo, no banda concert. And um if we do that, you can see the um chart at the right. The first um series of numbers is the twenty-five budget, which is basically the starting point, the base. And um scenario one um is what we would actually generate in revenue and expense. So revenue on, on the budget is one point three million. Scenario one, which is this scenario, we would only generate four hundred ninety-five thousand in revenue. We would still have one point two million in expense. Again, we need to pay for lights, porta potties, traffic control, shuttle buses, staffing, um tents, uh you name it, porta potties.
So you're saying the grandstand events alone is only one hundred twenty-three thousand dollars? Difference?
Um. Off of budget, so we have spent more than budget, if you recall. That's the, the base is budget, not, not what we spent last year, if that makes sense.
I, I have a follow-up question because I completely agree. And I'm also, when I looked through this at home, like getting ready for this presentation, I was really confused at these numbers because I feel like we had discussed an actual spend at the fair of significantly more than one point three. And I am confused in looking at this because I thought, and now I, I, I don't even remember which conversation we are in. I had thought the spend from your budget and other accounts to the fair was something closer to four million.
Include, um, including, uh, this does not include FTE, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't mention that, it's in the footnote under the chart. Um, FTE costs are, are a significant part of that um cost center. I'm pulling FTE out of it and just talk, it, it includes temp, overtime and all operating expenses. And so it's that's, it's that budget.
So this budget, the one point three eight.
Is temp, overtime and all operating expenses, no FTE.
Meaning it doesn't include your employees that you have year round.
Right.
Yeah, cause that's not an additional expense for the fair.
Right, so it, it was, it was trying to kind of make it just the cost of the fair, if that makes sense.
When you say that the cost of the fair, what was the number that you used, Emma?
Four, four million.
What was the cost of the fair in two thousand twenty-five, total cost, not including people that were already paying for?
So now you're two point five, where's the two point five?
Right, your total expense in twenty-five was two point five, at least that's on the chart, which.
Which chart, I have two points.
One twenty-five is not on there. Yes, this chart. Oh yeah, you're right, twenty-four, you're right. So the orange chart uh that we're looking at.
Yeah.
Cause this, this is where I get confused. Because if I have a number in my head that your total FTE spend and expenditures for your entire department, dedicated to resources supporting the fair, full-time employees throughout the year, um plus expenditures, plus capital cost, is something closer to four million. I'm looking at a PowerPoint presentation today that's uh one million three seventy-eight and I have a different chart of expenses of two point five five. I get real confused when I'm trying to make a budgetary decision.
No, that's fair.
Particularly when, like when we go through these options, we've got uh additional general fund expenditures, one is six hundred thousand, one is four hundred thousand, couple four hundred thousand, one is three. Like I just get really confused about what is the budget? And I understand, I hear you, you're trying to make it really narrow in how we are making a decision, but in making it so narrow that it, this chart, fair option one, disregards expenses carried by your department of an additional two point six million. It makes it difficult for me to articulate what the actual spend is and it, and also makes it difficult to articulate um the necessary like general fund budget add of six hundred thousand. When I know you have an additional two point six million, you're spending on this from other cost cat- cost categories, is that the right term?
Cost centers.
Cost centers, so I'm just, it's not that I'm saying yes, grandstand, no grandstand. I'm not, I can't, I, I'm having a hard time bringing that as an option, but I don't understand your budget as presented.
If I could explain why I, why I did it the way I did it. I took the twenty twenty-five budget out of J D Edwards, which is our budgeting system. Our expenditure um budget. Let's see. Is this Gabe, is this one point six million?
Where, yeah.
Okay.
And budget outside too, if you want.
Yeah, we, we can bring budget office in here if we want to.
I think we need to see it.
Yeah, so I'm not sure where four million came from, it could have been the entire division, which would include another cost center.
Hi Mark, we have a mark.
Hello.
We have a mark.
Um, so we're out there uh pulling up our numbers to um looking at the twenty twenty-five expenditures for the fair for those same categories. So temp labor, overtime and then operating the fair.
Like where's the, do you have a screen that shows the total cost of the fair?
Including full-time employees.
With full-time employees or without?
Yeah, down is fine.
Um, I can get that with the full-time employees as well. So without the full-time employees though, the cost was two, just over two million dollars for twenty twenty-five.
Can you put that on the screen?
Maybe, I don't, I might need some help with that.
Your whiteboard is gone.
You can send it to us, send an email right now.
They took your whiteboard.
That was on purpose, I don't know where that went.
Okay, but Mark, I love that, thank you. But now I'm, now I'm more confused because we have this two point five nine for twenty twenty-four. And then now we, you're talking about two flat, but this is still showing one million three seven eight. And this is supposed to also exclude full-time employees, so if.
And this is budget, this is not actuals for twenty twenty-five. What Mark just gave you were actual expenditure.
With the one-time ads. So that may, so that might be some of the things I remember from the last budget conversation where there were scenarios in which the fair encountered an expense. You had extra money in a different account that had not been expended and you were like, oh snap, I'm going to pull in fifty thousand dollars last minute to make sure that the TA system works correctly in the free concert tent or something.
Essentially.
So in one of the things, I mean, I appreciate Mark pulling up the big picture and this is something that we're still refining and trying to figure out how to articulate. When we talk about the overall expenses for the division, ongoing permanent expenses that regardless of which option we have, which offering we have, we have that baseline that we have to cover. FTE is one of those costs, right? That we have to, to cover regardless. And then we also have those expenses that come out of the parks budget um that we have used to make sure that we're covering all of the expenses related to the fair. It may not have been originally budgeted and allocated to the fair specifically that are also, they also have to be accounted for, but previously had not been accounted for in the same way as what we're doing going forward, which is pulling those out separately so we can track more or specifically. Because we have the overall parks budget and we have specifically what's been allocated to the fair. But the one point three seven eight is what's budgeted for fair. And then we have to true that up when we get through the fair and have all the expenses. There's the budget and then there's other parks budget that has been utilized to cover those expenses. The overall parks budget is not drawn. Uh, but when we're talking about specifically what we budget for the fair versus what we end up paying for the fair, we do have to account for that and that's what has been really challenging in the past. The FTE and we can add them back in, but you know, in trying to understand what levers we have to decide what offerings we're going to have with the fair. We have the baseline, it's always going to be a cost. We have staff who are working on the fair, but we have staff who are working all kinds of things throughout the year that we have to cover and we budget it for. And so I think we can add them back in and I'm speaking for you here, Byron. But you know, we were looking at how to describe the options for what is truly related to the fair. And as we pull different levers, what happens with the, the expenses for the fairs, what this was trying to do.
Okay.
But there's always the baseline that is going to be accounted for, whether we have a one-day fair or a five-day fair or whatever it is. We al- always have that expense that helps explain sort of why that is.
So the number.
Appearing this way.
In twenty twenty-five budget column in the expense row, one million three hundred seventy-eight thousand, hundred and ten. That is what came out of the budget process in twenty twenty-four for the fair in twenty twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, what, right about.
And see that one more time.
So when, when you all went through the budget process for the year twenty twenty-five, back in twenty twenty-four, the line item expense for the fair, excluding full-time employees, which is a, which is const- which is not a variable and one-time adds, what was appropriated or assessed uh for that year for the fair for twenty twenty-five was that number one million three hundred seventy-eight thousand, hundred and ten dollars?
That might be true, but like to me, that's immaterial. If you end up spending like in twenty-four, two point five nine million, like it's just like if you budget one point three eight or, or you know, one million seven hundred uh and one million three hundred seventy-eight and you end up spending closer to two, two and a half, like I don't, it becomes immaterial to me what you budgeted. If there's a routine practice of reallocating additional funds in part.
All I was trying to do is identify what that number represents.
You're, okay, then yes.
And, and we.
Kind of practice in the past.
Right.
Just.
We can't, that's why we came to an April because we don't want to do that anymore. We, we want to get it trued up and get it right.
Yes, that's what we're talking, that's why it has been that practice, but that's not the way that we want to account for the expenses for the fair.
So can we, so the problem with the slides that we have in front of us is the budget is great, but clearly the budget has not really meant anything when we talk about the fair, because we always run over budget. And if we were, if we spent around two million dollars, that's six hundred and twenty thousand dollars over budget. So we can't function with those variables. So if we want to have a conversation about how to move forward, I think we have to not go off of budgeted amounts, but actual real expenses and what would those impacts be moving forward? Cause the budget doesn't seem to matter at all, because it's always been overrun. So let's just work with what we know, which is real, which is.
Yeah. Well, and these scenarios are what it would really cost us to put on these different components. So you look at the expense for this first scenario at just under budget, but that includes nothing in the grandstands, so we're cutting a lot of expense. To your point, if we did, and if you look at the third scenario, if we did everything, you know, we wanted to do, it would be two point three million. So that, that middle column is what the actual expenses would be. And we're trying to say, this is what it's going to cost to do these different components. And then can we true up the budget to match up with one of these scenarios to offer what components you want to offer? If that was the best way I could try to put it together for you to give you something to make a decision on.
Was it best not to look at the twenty twenty-five budget column like?
It, it was just a baseline so that you understood that's what we were budgeted. But really at the end of the day, and it's also so that you understand if, if we're going to do it, if we're, if you're going to do one of these scenarios, there's going to be an impact on general fund. Cause the current budget is down in that neighborhood, in that one point three million area. If we're going to do more, then it's going to cost more to the general fund. I just want to make sure you know that. I'm sorry, yes ma'am.
Emma. Okay, so I hear that. That if we do more, it's going to cost out of general fund and you're trying to true this up. And honestly, you have been really trying to be transparent all year and you're right. And you brought to us this problem.
We appreciate.
And I appreciate that, thank you. I always appreciate when people come and they're like, I have this tangled ball of string, would you like to see it? Can we fix it together? So thank you. Also, I, the board sees budgets that have been worked on by this team for like six months. And so your first draft and what we see are so different. And so like, I think for me, I'm just trying to catch up a lot.
Absolutely.
With a lot of the detail that you and finance and management have been working on to refine and hold in balance with other departments. And so a lot of this is us catching up, me catching up.
Absolutely.
I think where I get, where I got confused, and thank you for saying it was April, feels like a year ago, but it was April.
Yeah.
Um, where I got confused in April was if there is such significant money in your other cost centers, in parks, what is happening to those activities that they are budgeted up to create? Like, or like what is, what is going on that that money is available to be moved to respond to a one-time crisis at fair expenditures?
Honestly?
Yes, please, we're trying.
Capital projects uh are budgeted in the same um cost centers as operating and roll up the same way. And so having capital projects that were budgeted, for example, the Veterans Memorial Amphitheater.
Right.
Budgeted, not expended, general fund expense shows up in the budget for parks. Um, could cov- you know, covers. Could cov- you know, covers the fact that we go over unfair.
Yeah.
We don't wanna do that. That's why we're here. We don't wanna do that. No, it's not how we wanna do it, but it is what covered it to answer your question.
I feel your face in my soul. Like I'm like, so you're trying to unwind that.
Correct.
We're trying to level set.
Yes.
I'm still playing catch up. Like, can you talk about, we're scheduled to be with you for quite a while? And I know this is a ser- a series of options for us. We have another fifty minutes with you. Would it be helpful, and I'm just speaking to myself, to take a little pause and have you all take a chat? Because like I'm trying to understand what you've been unwinding, what that looks like. And if we fund one of these things, what is my confidence level that the budget we agree to will actually do what it's intended to do? And it's not gonna be like, hey, we're funding an amphitheater that we later choose not to build. So there's a lot of money in that cost center and is available to solve one time problems at a singular event like the fair. And so I, I understand, I've done event management, y'all have done, you know, and he was running campaigns on event management in some capacity, but like I've done professional event management and I understand, like you just sometimes have an emergency happen. You have a P A system fail, you've got a this, you have a golf cart that doesn't show up, like something happens and you have to solve a problem. But I'm trying to like, if we're gonna write a budget, I'd like to attempt to write a budget that reflects what we intend to spend. And so to have these conversations and hear you say thoughtfully that you're trying to unwind some of those practices that led to a lack of transparency, yes, please, let's do that. But then how do I, as a decision maker, understand what has happened to be able to even make a choice today? I don't like the choices you're giving me today. And you knew we weren't gonna like them. And so like, I'm already uncomfortable and then I have this lurking in the background and I, it makes me feel like I'm not able to make a decision.
Okay. So I would make a suggestion because we've spent some time trying to figure out how to thread the needle to explain the costs of the fair. But I think we probably need to pause this and come back with it. Um so that we can actually update with the full budget numbers, including permanent F T E. I worry that we're gonna get caught up in trying to pull numbers on the fly today to explain it. That won't help the conversation. And so I might suggest that we revamp that and come back.
Sure. And Steve had his hand up before your comment. Sorry, Dion.
I agree. So my comment's gonna end with yes, let's bring this back. This. It, it should never be high level, regardless of what department we're talking about. That a budget is, is a fiction that is just for a checkbox. Always. So I'm still concerned that we have allowed, even after years one and two, to still budget, knowing that we were gonna go over budget, but we would always find a way that seems lacking a little bit of transparency and planning to find, to cover in two ways. Number one, it's not truth and budgeting. And then number two, the practice of the past, like, and I understood that we've gotten a few explanations about it, but not excuses about the political pressures and all that crap. Okay, I get it. And I, I, we're trying the best we can to look forward. But unless we actually analyze what's been happening in the past, we can't make the right decisions moving forward. Never, ever, ever should we allow from this point forward, somebody to say, this is the budget, knowing that's not the budget. I mean, that the budget needs to match the expected spend. That's the whole point of a budget. That's what we have to do. Now, I've gotten and heard, and we've all heard from different points of view, that this is happening in every potential department in some way. And that we might need to look at the department budget. That includes capital expenditures and, and over the last five years. And so then we could see when it shows parks, we will see a line for the, for the fair. And you'll see budget, actual expenditure. And then we'll see capital and we'll see the what was the capital? Well, if we haven't approved or we haven't spent money on the amphitheater, there was no way that was ever intended or supposed to be a slush fund to cover other things. But we're hearing about this in other pro- uh departments too. You're just happened to get beat up on it because you keep bringing it out and we kept beating you on because you're showing it. But this is happening in other departments. I wanna see this same big picture department budget by department for the last five years. What was budgeted, what was spent on each of those lineups? So we can identify the patterns here. It is so important. And we've asked for this because I started talking about people who wanna talk about slush funds or slippery funds or whatever the term is. And in fact, when I use that term, everyone's like, oh, yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't say that. But this is literally an example where I can't make a decision on this when it says one point three, knowing that that's not real. And it hasn't been real. And I just saying, I appreciate the fact that you are gonna unwind it and that it is, we're ripping a Band-Aid off, right? But I, I gotta tell you, this is part of the change of culture. This is the part of the change of practices. We've got new leadership. We've got new leadership in finance, but this is not just this department. And that's not an excuse. It's an explanation that we need to look, like if we're gonna look at this like we should, because I can't make a decision today. And I sure as heck can't make a decision knowing that some of the things that we've approved in the past are now going towards other things and, you know, we can't do that. But it's happening in other places. So I'm taking the request that you just said, can we stop, come back to something a little bit more broader and say yes? But I need to see that for the other departments because eight months ago. Not today, but I can tell you that this is the very thing that I interpreted when I heard one of my fellow commissioners say, we're on the bubble of a really bad situation. And it's exactly this kinda stuff, okay? Where we're having cost overruns and we're hiding it with this or we're not hiding or whatever, we're speculating with this and, you know, and then we're making it up here, but it's not, it's not clear. And when we get capital projects that we're approving, whether it's parks or facilities or transportation, and we at the end of the day, it's budget season and the only choice that we get last week, like for transportation is two point five million, like and even then that wasn't a real decision. It was like, you can make that decision to not do this, but you really don't have a decision because that two point five is already taken. We're losing our duty of oversight and understanding. And we are ultimately responsible. So we have to do it in a way that's not looking like we're blaming staff. And my frustration sometimes comes out that way, but the ultimate thing is that we have to take on our responsibility that we owe to the to the taxpayers and the voters and all constituents, whether they pay tax or vote or whatever. The point is, is we owe that and we have to ask these tough questions, knowing that if we don't and we keep allowing stuff to happen, then shame on us. So I'm just gonna say yes, let's bring this back. And I'm gonna beg you all, this has to be a broader analysis because this is, we've heard, oh yeah, this is just happening. Thank God they haven't shown like, like you are in parks. This is happening in other places. We owe it in our duty to, to expand this analysis.
I'll be good. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and go and we'll finish with you Julie. So I, I do agree with my commissioners. I agree with Dion on taking a pause and bringing this back. Um, so the staff, you know, Byron and Courtney and Gabe, you have the unfortunate um, timing of being in front of us as we vet through this. This is really a board discussion that we've been having. So I know we had Brian Staley just yesterday, last week, I don't know. So the new leadership brings new change. Um, and we're talking, we are thinking out loud on how do we navigate this as a board? How, you know, we're in a trifecta, uh, we have a new board. We are also taking into account the um sensitivity to what is happening to our residents at really the global county level, how different things are affecting their daily lives and are, is their mindset also changing? Um, on how they look at their entertainment dollars, but how are they looking at where they get their shelter, where they get their next meal? You know, all, so we, we hold that as well when we look at these lenses. And then the, you know, the third trifecta is is just really the political tension that we all, we all are kinda holding. And I'll just speak for myself. Um, so there are underlying concerns here that is not just directed at Brian public works, you and Park, you for events and fair, that it is overall. And we are feeling, I'm speaking for myself, I can't speak for the whole board, is really holding very tightly our residents' needs and accountability. Um, and how do we make all of this work? So that's just been a real challenge for me is the oversight accountability. And then Steve hit it on the head regarding the change. So residents are looking at us. I've never felt this level of and it's not just budget and it's not just programming. There's a, a larger level of scrutiny um, along the polit- political spectrum. And we are very fortunate. I don't, haven't seen any polls recently that the local level, so your county and your city government, that people still really have a high level of trust that we're doing the right thing. So as far as the change goes, um, the board is taking a shift. Cause before we would say, go out, you build, you build beautiful things, make it inclusive. Um, you know, makes, do sensory playgrounds and do this. And we would just give general direction of generally go in this broad spectrum of direction. Um, because resources are limited, we are being much more highly sensitive of the direction is here. You know, and so the change is also at a leadership level and it's really needed for a number of reasons. I am looking forward to, so there, there's that from me is that it's just a directional change. So please don't walk away today that this is a personal thing. It's really the board saying we need a higher level of scrutiny that the, the verbal okays to run budget, over budget, that was five county mana- four county managers ago. Um, isn't the way we want to, we don't want to continue that practice. And I think that's part of the untangling of the ball and that starts new with this board. I mean, we, we found out you honestly shared it with us, what had occurred in past administrations. We were not aware of that. Julie and Kathy, I don't think we're here even elected for that conversation. So we have to give credit where credit is due and we appreciate your honesty in bringing that forward and we hated the news. We hated it. We still hate it. Um, but we're gonna work through it. So I wanna give you that um commitment that I will work through this in these presentations and also with Dion and give you the, the time. I am looking forward to our chief financial officer coming on board. So we have just a couple of weeks um, to help us, someone give us a new lens on, you know. So yes, I understand capital projects are for this cost center or this cost center or this cost center. But maybe it's like separate, like capital is accounted separately, like however that works out, that's above and beyond my pay grade. Um. My questions for Dion, I think I know the answers and what you want to do based on what you said. How critical is this conversation as, what is needed? And how does this affect the twenty twenty budget approval that's gonna come later this month, early part of December?
So we have um, general placeholder in the budget for the fair. There's elements of the fair that we need to determine so that we can um, figure out how to deliver those within whatever budget we land on, right? So when we're talking about some of the scenarios, I think a lot of this is really looking at the actual scope of the fair and some of the components of the fair. But we are able to amend the budget and when doing this, um, and all of that. That's sort of the impact of what we have proposed for the adopted budget currently and what we still need to answer. Because I do wanna say, the overall analysis, I think, is really critical. And we are going through a shift as we're talking about department wide budgets versus programmatic budgets and how we have typically in the past utilized some flexibility within programmatic budgets versus what's in a department budget. That is a conversation just across the county that we need to be having as well as the transparency of how we have made the decisions on what the real cost is. And part of what, and I do wanna give credit to the team because they've tried really hard to show what is the actual cost, that every item we add, every element of program we add has a cost. Maybe in the past, there was a sense that we just have a way to cover it and not really a true understanding of what that cost is. And sometimes we're willing to bear that cost, you know, because we think that it's a value and that we wanna do that. But being able to describe what that cost is every time, I think, is important. We've worked hard on the presentation today, but it's been very, I, I have to apologize to Byron because I was out last week and trying to put it together and have feedback on it ahead of time. I don't want them to present something to you that's going to be um, difficult. We wanna be able to help you have your information, get to a decision, um, and to give direction. We wanna have that direction too. So I know you all put a lot of work into it, but I also think it's important to reset.
I do have one follow up question, um, then that Julie and then I have Kathy. Um. And I think we should, I only have a couple more meetings as the chair. Um, you know, we walk away, we give direction and we think everyone walks away that. I'm not quitting as a chair. I think y'all are gonna move along with the new chair. We usually rotate the chair.
January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Down to like.
Like November.
This is here. So I think we. Yeah. Okay, so really. I have a handful of meetings as the chair and I think we walk away from these discussions. I, I have two, I have the same question for E L T and I have the same question for staff. And my question, and I'm gonna start with Byron and Gabe and Courtney, if you wanna chime in here. And E L T, please don't, don't have a little freak out. Um.
Now they will.
What do you need from us? What do you need from us as you walk, you know?
We. We have a certain amount of time until we've got a book acts and like, so we need, are we gonna do concerts or not? And are we gonna do one concert or only, only, only one or two or?
So I have, um, I have, uh, I, I go to meetings starting next week to talk about concerts to talk about um, free entertainment, the walk around stuff. Um, and if we don't book that kind of stuff November through December, um, a lot of these folks, this is what they do year round. So they're setting their routes now for the entire calendar for twenty twenty six. Um, same thing with, with the concerts. It's one of those things where we've had great years where we've lucked into acts like Jordan Davis, Nate Smith. Those are things where we booked them super, super early, um, lock them in at a lower rate. And then by the time August rolls around, they're now booking for closer to a hundred thousand when we have booked them for fifty to forty thousand. So those conversations are already starting. So I just needed, I just need to know, should I be having these conversations? Should I be looking into putting in offers to artists for the Wednesday, Saturday, Sunday concerts? Um, and then what you want the free on grounds entertainment to look like. And those are things like the dog show, the racing pigs, um, the buskers who walk around, the stilt walkers, that kind of thing. So I know that that is not, that's kind of a large ask, but that is kind of where we're at.
No, I appreciate you being very candid with us. Did you have anything, Gabe?
I mean, to be blunt commissioners, how much money do we have to work with? I mean, just to be really blunt and honest, you know, I am. And I will go back and we'll come up with a plan and we'll support the community, but I'm not here, they are not here, we are not here for ourselves. We are here to serve the community. Every single day park serves the community. I turn around my office, I have a great window, a great view of the park. People are at our park. So tell me how mu- how much money I have and I'll go do it. I mean, to break it down, free on grounds entertainment, seventy five thousand dollars. To get portlets, it costs it costs us twenty five thousand dollars to get portal. To get equipment, maxi lights, it costs us ninety four thousand dollars. To get demo derby is forty eight thousand dollars. To get production on the free stage is thirty six thousand dollars. The free bands on the Budweiser stage is thirty nine thousand six hundred dollars. Bright and Fire now is sending us a bill for thirty thousand dollars. Things cost money. A portlet in twenty nineteen costs sixty dollars. I had to track this down. Sixty dollars for a portlet. Now it's ninety dollars. We used to have sixty five on ground portlets. Now we have eighty eight. We used to have seventeen, eighty eight toilets. Now we have twenty six. Those cost ninety five dollars. So if you wanna budget breakdown, we can give it to you. We can tell you how much a five day fair costs, Wednesday through Sunday, every, everything from food to portlet to hand washing station.
To ice, we have everything.
Ice costs us twelve thousand dollars. Radios cost us two thousand one hundred and ninety six dollars or something like that for radios for staff. So if you want that breakdown, we can give it to you. And I, I would say for twenty four, we're probably pretty good to give you all that breakdown. Twenty five, I would think we could probably get a good breakdown of twenty five, but it's all so much money we have and we.
And I will go and spend it and I will bring back some great entertainment, but I can't, I can't start having those conversations until.
I know what we're doing.
Yeah.
I really appreciate you being really candid and, you know, informing the board of what, what pressures you're up against on timing and commitment is really helpful. Is really helpful. Okay, so Dion, um, what do you need from the board from us? And what is the, what does it look like, your next steps?
So I think we have the direction to provide more detailed, comprehensive budget for the full cost of. The fair and I think twenty four and as much as we have twenty five would be helpful. One of the things that we were trying to do here, I just don't think it did very well, was articulate what is the base cost of the. The base fear, I don't know what you would call it, just the basic fear for the current elements that we have, what is that base cost? Which is kind of the placeholder we have in the budget currently for what that looks like and how much we have F D E, how much we have. I'm I'm gonna say one time, but it's sort of the uh annual cost that we add and not the ongoing uh cost, but the annual cost for the fair. Um, to do that analysis and bring that back to you, that report, bring that back to you. Um, I think that and Mark can share more about just the the budget process itself, where we're at with it. Um, and part of it is, you know, the bigger question of kind of what kind of fair do we wanna have, I think is probably. A question for a little later, once we have an understanding of what the base fair actually is.
I think like what you can do is show a section of the fair. And then here's what somebody's determining base. I don't like that term, but whatever you think is like the base fair. And then all the extras that we've had that have not considered the base for that have totaled six or seven hundred thousand dollars in the last few years. When you look at the whole thing and you see the total, we're smart enough to work with these folks and say, if we pull this piece out. It changes the bottom line enough and we have to choose then, do we increase that bottom line in the budget? Or do we say, no, we have to reduce something up above? But that's a simple, but until we have like a view of that over the year, we it's hard for us and then we can determine.
So Julie, I have Kathy.
Okay, so my statement's very clear. I I like Steve's idea of doing a larger analysis. Um, one of the things I am concerned about is if we're pulling money from different projects to fund overruns, how does that impact those other projects? And so when we talked about our C I P projects, when we talked about the parks. Conversation and all of the project that parks has going on, like that money is now gone. So how does that, like, what, again, I wanna function in reality. What the, that money's gone, so how does that impact those projects that are in the plan? Um, that we talked about. Um, so. That I would like that analysis to be part of this too. I don't know if that needs to come back. Paired with this event or if it's a different analysis, but that's one of the things I'm worried about is. The real money is now gone. How do these other projects are then impacted by um covering the overruns?
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you. I know this presentation took you a lot of time. Also, I wanna say thank you for. Bringing us the reality of the fair budget and I also wanna thank staff. I mean, I I know it seems like it. It's, you know, you come and tell us the truth and we're like, shut up. We don't understand. Why are you telling us this? So here's the thing, and I want, this is for my colleagues. I don't think any of us. We've been spending, what, two million plus on the fair these last couple of years? None of us wanna be responsible. For putting on a fair that costs one million three hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. Because the backlash and disappointment in the community will be so gut-wrenching and so deep. At the, at the changes we would have to make to do that. I do not advise that as a course forward. We don't understand how where all the money's going. We're not exactly sure how it's impacting the projects, but we do know that we've been managing to put on a two million dollar plus fair. Now, year over year, is that sustainable? I don't know, but I don't think that we're making, we're cutting that budget almost in half in one fell swoop. Because I don't think that's a product or a debt that any of us want our names attached to. So I think we have to be realistic about what twenty twenty six budget is actually going to include. And it's gonna bring some pain points about possibly projects and where the park projects and where they are in the queue. And what the ultimate timelines of completing those projects are going to be, but I have no interest in slashing this, in in truing up. In a way that's going to cut this budget and eliminate the activities and the events that this community, quite frankly, by. Dear God, by August of twenty twenty six, um, could be doing, coming to the fair instead of going on vacation. Let's be realistic. This is going to be a lot of people's vacation. In Adams County, uh, because we know that it's, that we know what's coming down the pike at us. So I would say, thank you for this. I would recommend, I don't, I I think we need to have some. Make some kind of big swinging decisions before we leave this room so that Courtney knows what she's working with, so the staff know what they're working with. And we're gonna have to, and this next year, it's not gonna be in all the neat boxes and with with no eraser, with no eraser marks and no big crisscrosses out of changing some numbers. But we have to give them something to work with and we are screw it up later and make it all nice and neat, probably in twenty twenty seven. But we're gonna have a fair, we're have the money for it, we've always had it and we need to give them some direction today about what that's gonna look like because we don't want. This, our need to have a greater understanding, which I thank you for trying to educate us on that. Delaying or impacting the fair in ways that we're all gonna come to regret.
Can you go back to the slide that has the breakdown of the elements of the fair? And what, I'm calling this the base here. I don't know if it's the right term, but what we currently offer. Um, for the five-day fair and this is what we've currently tried to budget to. Um, this is what is kind of the current slate and I think there's room to talk at a later date if any of this. Needs to be pulled out or what that looks like, but this is the current slated components of the fair, um, that is in that. About two point five million dollars last year, um, for putting.
That's a good, uh, uh, you're right. This is a good one of, what I'm saying is you have two columns for each year. Going back five years for each one of these and you can look and see what do we budget, what was the actual, what do we budget?
Three because the pandemic was so fricking weird.
I don't care, that's.
Three would, if more detail on the past twenty five, twenty four, twenty three, I think could be really helpful. Because twenty one and twenty two are so fricking weird.
And then the twenty six ask, that so the difference, so whether that's. Price, you know, inflation or like some explanation on the ask of increased quantity. Gay brought that up, like. It's, you know, quantity in portlets, quantity in golf carts.
And it has to be, it has to be all inclusive, not like truth and budget detriment.
Bottom lining it a little bit will help.
So I know this is a huge amount of effort for a nine hundred million dollar budget and this is, you know, two to three million dollar spend. The reason I think you see us putting so much head damage into it is because the fair is so forward-facing community. And to be perfectly blunt, we're not even talking about uh what is essentially, um. You got like your second to last slide, which is you wanna cut other programs to fund some of these overruns and I am. One, uncomfortable with the options laid out for fair amenities. Even more uncomfortable with slide twenty four, um, in general, and we need a balanced. Schedule of cultural offerings throughout the year to have exactly what Kathy was saying is. Folks are having a hard time accessing food right now. They're not even gonna be going up to Cheyenne days, like they're not even gonna be going like, oh, let's go do a road trip and go see. The Grand Canyon, they're gonna be here and so having. Relevant cultural entertainment throughout the year, well-be days, Stars and Stripes, Pride, Festival Latino. Having a full calendar of free that's well-programmed. Is so essential for our communities to feel like they lead a rich cultural life while also being here. And not being able to go. Like I remember like our leanest days when my kids were small, I had the S C F B free. Schedule taped to my fridge and that was what we did for fun. That was fun. And so like we are going in circles, but like. I also wanna name that it isn't just about the fair. Y'all baked in a, an ask of like making it okay to cut other programming to pay for some of these overruns and I'm. Not comfortable with that and I don't want to have you do all of this analysis. And all this work and then we get back to what is the revised slide twenty four and then we have a freak out about that. So I just wanna name that in advance. I'm not, I want a full offering of free cultural amenities for our community for all the reasons Kathy said.
I think that's important to name and we we will track that. I do wanna add sort of deeper conversation. That all of those events have a cost that previously was not added to the budget, right? And so putting on those events, part of what we're kind of trying to do, this is being transparent is. Without an increase to the budget for those events like Pride and Festival Latino, they have been absorbed in the parks budget in. Various ways, so we wanna be able to describe the actual cost of those events and again.
The numbers are the truth, the truth, the truth, the truth.
You may need to say we're going to subsidize those costs. I mean, that is what we wanna do, but they are free to the public, but not free to us. We have. And so what is that actual cost that we have to find in the past, they've been added to the parks.
Yeah, there's no line item for Stars and Stripes.
Those, so the parks team has absorbed those in the budget through various means, um, but hasn't actually had additional budget added to. Cover those and that is a piece of the big picture of how we've kind of got to this point and we wanna be really transparent about what that actually will look like.
Yeah, extra direction.
I guess my, what's the total budget of that department every year?
It's gonna be a fun conversation.
I'd ask for a conversation, I'm asking for one number for the.
All of parks or or just events?
Just general fund, I think is what he was asking by fund. I think the general fund budget is why you're mostly asking about, yeah.
Let's see roughly, cause I haven't kind of parsed out here. Around twenty million.
Right, so. This is probably landing, cause it's landing this way for me. When Emma says slide twenty four is what the end of this was gonna look like. We're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars. It's how I felt for the last two weeks when talking about public work saying. You get to choose which of the neighborhood projects you've been working ten years on to slice and dice, but don't look at anywhere else behind the curtain on these other things. Okay, we got twenty million dollars in parks and you're asking these two to maybe slice and dice the Pride or the Latino Fair? Uh, something that they've worked really hard to lead, that's how it feels and and I know that's probably not how it's intended. But it's almost like, I know that, but I'm just trying to feel like, like, like when you ask us to say. Take out the things that are like, that you've busted your tail on for the last X amount of years to try to bring to the community. And those are the things that staff is gonna ask you to sacrifice first before they look behind the curtain on the other rest. That's how it's landing and I can understand why Emma says I have concerns about slide twenty four. Cause that's exactly how I feel for all the other stuff that I've done for the last two weeks. So I want us to work together on this. Because I know that wasn't the intention and I know that's not the, but I know we can do this. We can do this where all these things can be done in the right way. Moving things the right way and making sure that the things that we bring to the table are not ignored. Because there's a reason why people voted for some of us and we work on some things that we have perspectives that we bring to the table beyond. What staff says behind the scenes about their criteria.
Is there, my question for staff, is there an expectation? That we can do the fair, say, on par with what we did in twenty twenty five? And ha- maintain. The, have money in the budget to do Pride and Festival Latino. Stars and Stripes in twenty twenty six.
And will be days.
Okay, but I'm just saying, because I I think what, I think what. It is, it's November, what is it, fifth? We're not gonna change the entire way we do the budget in the next ten days. So we have to make a decision today. Courtney still needs to know how much money she's going into those meetings with next week to get us the best entertainment she can get. We have to give them a number, a a broad paintbrush stroke today. Of what the fair is gonna look like next year or we're gonna lose entertainment and we will, the event will suffer.
And I'm happy to tell you what we spent in twenty twenty five on some of those elements, like for example, the free on grounds entertainment, that's those walk-around people. That cost us seventy five thousand dollars. So if I'm going next week and having these meetings, I just need to know. How much can I spend so that I can bring in one to two shows, maybe a busker and get on people's schedules? Um, as far as the artists for the grandstands go. The concerts only cost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and that was for Wednesday, Saturday and Sunday. And that doesn't include production. That is quite literally just for me to bring humans here to sing and put on a great show. The production cost ninety five thousand.
I appreciate Kathy's enthusiasm. I too wanna give you some co- you know, contract authority. But I have a lot of anxiety about if we do that, then what? And are other programs gonna be cut to support that contract authority?
We'll have to cut something. Keep funding.
I know that, but then what? Then then, but then to just say in a vacuum, yes, go fund this without understanding where the money comes from.
That's a fair question.
Is uh not how I do budgeting.
We gotta decide where the priorities lie. Is the fair our number one priority?
It's not my number one priority. It is a balance in the offerings that we make all year.
Okay, then we'll have to cut back on the fair to make sure that the Pride and Latino Fest also are a priority. You can't have it all.
Right, but we need to have that conversation.
Well, that's why I need to big picture, cause there's a difference between saying, cut this by fifty, cut this by fifty, so you get this at a hundred. That's why we just need to see the differences and if it means there's a difference between.
But Courtney's trying to plan something next week.
And I can go and I can put, I can pencil us in for folks and I can at least. Get on people's radar. I mean, it's not, I'm not signing contracts by any means. I just have to. These are folks who that this is their livelihood. They travel around three hundred and sixty-five days a year and they're planning their schedules. So I can absolutely pencil us in. And get us routed through some of the other Rocky Mountain states and if. You all come back to me and say, this is what we want fair to look like, I can go back to those folks and say, hey, I'm gonna book dogs and pigs and I'm not gonna book a busker and that's fine. Um, so I can absolutely just pencil things in and start putting out feelers in in the concert world. Um, to see who's who's trending, who I can get a coupon for.
So is is the decision we need to make today, are we, I mean, essentially. Are we going with the twenty five budget and seeing where it lands?
Currently been planning as if we are offering the same events that we have in previous years. But mindful of, as we shared in April, we have a structural deficit and what we've been um providing. Cost are going up and revenue has, is not going to go up to meet those costs. We had a structural deficit in twenty five. And if we offer the same slate of offerings, then we will have to cover that somehow. Um, and so we've, you know, we've been doing that through various means, um, again, to cover that, but that is a reality. We have a structural deficit as we add events that we have to figure out how to cover it, but we've been planning as if we are offering. All of those same events, we kind of know, know the cost and know the plan for for all the things, but that is the. The challenge that, you know, we're unwinding and I don't know if twenty six will be the year that we fully unwind it, we may.
No, unfortunately, if we just go with the one point three million dollar budget. Um, we can't generate enough revenue to be able to cover the revenue budget and so we negatively impact the general fund. And so what I was trying to solve for with the scenarios were. The lowest amount that we would need to be able to put on a reasonable facsimile of the fair, again, not doing a concert Wednesday. Not doing P B R would be three hundred thousand dollars to try to make ends meet. And and that's what we were trying to do was come up with. If you want everything, it's gonna cost you this much and that's what those numbers at the bottom of the page in red were. Uh, just trying to give you, give you options, but you know, if we're, if we're not gonna go after all of the concerts, that helps us. Then we, then we understand what we wanna wanna shoot for, but if we do no concerts. That is a significant impact to revenue. It'll affect the carnival, it affects beer sales, it affects everything. And just make one move. You remove fifty thousand people from going to a concert, you move fifty thousand people who are also spending money throughout the rest of the.
It's all very much a domino effect and one affects the other and they're all, they're all very important components to any, to any fair. It's, this is where a hundred and sixty thousand people come and spend time with their fellow community members and if you remove one, it affects all of them.
And you show that it's a huge Adams County community. Like we're talking like a hundred and sixty thousand, I don't know.
We can move forward with what we've been planning. I just wanna. Flag that we have the structural deficit that still has to be solved and we've gotta figure out the best way to solve that and we're also mindful of just the pressures on the general fund. Um, this is your direction for sure and I I agree with Emma that we need more conversation about.
We do.
How we wanna do that, um, but still out there.
As a, as a flag with, as a flag with all the comment, I know we are supposed to take a break. All the, everything in line, I have op page nineteen open. Slide nineteen.
It is.
Fair option four.
Option four, uh, Wednesday concert is replaced with a youth rodeo. Which I actually love. And um, other grandstand events remain the same, no P B R on Saturday. Keeps ag focused, local focused, reduces concert expenses. Um, Saturday concert, a Saturday concert would draw the crowd in, so it'd be Saturday concert but no P B R. And requires the smallest um general fund budget addition. So like. This is like, like you said, balance approach, compromise approach. I much prefer option four to option five for obvious reasons.
And we didn't wanna do that, but we, we were trying to find a way to pay for it within. And we didn't wanna do that, but we, we were trying to find a way to pay for it within the existing budget, given that we know the strength of the general fund, so. It wasn't to, to cut something that's near and dear to you, it was just, we don't have any other options. I, I totally get it, I just say like, it just, it lands. I understand, I just wanted to say.
We need to have a concert, I like that there's a Saturday concert, I like option four.
I think if you.
And we need the other data as well.
The Saturday concert. Like, first of all, PBR was kind of cool to have. Like, totally awesome.
Absolutely.
But, so then, like, tell me about. PBR versus concert, like. Draw people for both.
Ye- yes, it depends on, it, it all kind of clinches on who we can get booked as far as the concert artist goes.
And, and then so PBR is.
PR was just, eh, people weren't coming specifically for PBR. Most people that bought a ticket to that double night were coming for the artist. PBR was just a fun added bonus. Now, in past years, we have had some people, some citizens come to us and say that we have no element of a rodeo. Cause the last time we did a full rodeo was in twenty fourteen, couple a hundred people attended, so we pulled back, switched to PBR. So when people come to us and say that, we've always been able to say, we do still have an element of rodeo, we offer a professional bull riding. But by switching it back to, um, when I was in four H, we did a youth rodeo where it was in the grandstands. It had steer dobbing, team pending, all of the elements of rodeo except for the bucking broncs and the bucking. Um, and so, you know, grandparents come, parents come, it's not gonna be like a huge. Attendance, but it is something that will give our local youth who are in the high school rodeo, little britches. Our four H kiddos a chance to come out and compete in a larger scale rodeo.
Like school bands or pep bands.
Yes, and we, and past years we brought out. Legacy High School has performed a couple of times at the rodeos. Um, and so there's ways that we can spin it to make and to involve not just our ag kiddos, but just kids from all over the community.
So s- the option four, we remove the concert on Wednesday, but we retain the rodeo element. PBR is cool, but like, it's almost more special because it's youth.
And it's your own kids.
Oh, option four. Four, and we're gonna have a conversation about the budget. And because it's new, if there's stuff that commissioners can do to participate in the hype up. Of the youth rodeo, I love going to that, I love going to that stuff. I love going to. Like out of Jeffco, I know we don't have them, I know they're over there, but like. I love that stuff, like, I would be happy to help.
We're twelve twenty-two, we have parts till twelve thirty, so you go ahead, Steve, it looks like option four. With the added data information to come back.
Figure out the rest.
And I, I'm backing on supporting Lynn's, I mean, Emma's thing that, help us, let us help. Own this decision and help us make it a success. Push us out there, and this might be our Adams Aggies like wrestlers event on Wednesday night that we could do that raises money.
That's fun. We kept talking about that, we had no place to put it in the schedule.
This might be the ideal time to do one hour of that in a certain section in the stands.
And with the business things.
For, it raises money to pay for some of the livestock stuff, so. If you guys don't mind, I have this laid out that I kind of gave up on last year, but if this might work.
Any last thoughts? Thumbs up? We're good, fire.
So we had a, we had a second ask, so we're, we're adding, we're moving revenue. But it's the other events that you were talking about, the community events, like. First of all, Stars and Stripes don't have a budget for it, it's the support for Dragon Boats. Uh, wellby days, those type of. So, so we, we are moving revenue out of fair. Over to our event cost center, two different, the new cost center we work with budget on. Um, and that revenue is from the money we make out of the buildings, selling liquor and renting the buildings, renting the shelters. So that revenue is moving over, we're asking if we can spend that revenue that we're moving over, so if we could get. An expense add to be able to pay for all of these community events. And we're asking for beyond that revenue sixty-three thousand dollars. To be able to fund all of that stuff, so Courtney did the math to work out that it would be. The Stars and Stripes, the, the, um, Festival Latino prior already baked into that budget, but it would be the, uh, all the other little stuff. The, the Strasburg, uh, days, the, um, the, the Bennett Concert Series, the support we give all those things, wellby days. We, we wanted, we, we're asking just to, to fund that, especially given that we're bringing the revenue, so. Like the idea that we're making it more transparent.
I think you can work with Dion, we have the new CFO coming on and. Take the win, we got to option number four, and then we can bring this back with the follow-up. Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back.
I fell over the roof.
I'm sitting at here and we'll move on to end with from there, but just a reminder, this is our third study session. Looking at the 2026 proposed budget. We have our, our little roadmap there, but what we are hoping to talk to about today are a couple of things. One is we'll be reviewing BLCC memberships, the memberships budget. We also have had some follow up conversations on a couple of the proposed items that you all had flagged. To see if we could accommodate in the budget and also a couple of conversations we've had with the sheriff and the DA about the FTE request they made. Basically swapping one FTE for another, but I'm putting it into the budget. I did want to just say out here that we had done a analysis on whether or not we would be able to accommodate a greater AEI investment for employees. And we are not going to be recommending that we make any changes other than what we've already proposed. And really it's because we are a little concerned about our fund balance, particularly social services fund balance. And so it's an ongoing conversation if we're able to do more than the 2.75%. But you know, we had kind of talked about whether or not we'd be able to accommodate that and you'll see in our recommendation. We do have one proposal for sheriff's deputies, but we are hoping to hold steady on what we already had approved.
Okay.
For 2026, March and Mark.
Yeah. Mark's gonna go ahead and walk us through some of this and chime in whenever. Yeah, so I mean, you all were there for pretty much all of this, but I thought for just the sake of reviewing the, this whole process, it's not just these last three study sessions. I mean, this, this, this kicked off in January with the gathering of capital projects. And you know, it goes throughout the year and, and you see it kind of ends in January when we file our budget and open up the CIP process again. So it's, you know, we're, we've been living in 2026 for a while and now we've got to start getting used to saying 2027 here in the next couple of months. But yeah, so the first things we want to do today is just make sure that through these last couple of study sessions and, and working sessions that we, if there are any other priorities of the board that haven't been addressed in the budget. We kind of put out a call for that at our last study session on the 21st. Didn't hear anything then, but just one last, you know, bring it up. And also to remind you that we will have regular amendments to the budget next year. So as things change or come up, we have the opportunity to update the budget to address either new priorities or maybe something that didn't get addressed here. So.
There. I knew we had some conversation and had prepared a memo for you all about really what we're able to do with our general fund authority for some of the sort of safety net backfill and things like that that we are interested in. We are still looking at that. We are still anticipating conversation about if we are going to develop some sort of ordinance related to utilizing general funds for programming, what that actually would look like and what the parameters of that would be. So that's an ongoing conversation. It's not currently, we don't currently have a, an amount or something like that that we can apply to 2026 budget. But we know that that conversation is still ongoing. So as we talk about things like, you know, food security and rental assistance and things like that, there's still more conversation and analysis that's happening with that.
Alright. So I, I guess another pause here just to make sure I don't start talking over a commissioner before they have any priorities, but if there's nothing moment, we can move on.
I'll just mention, I actually think priorities that I were interested in, I talked to DM a lot about. And we're going to talk about how to move them forward in 26 and what that looks like. A lot of its childcare related items, we applied to the DOLACRAD, which is really important for, frankly, because we've lost about 500 beds, your spots in the past couple of months. So working with CED, so I feel like a lot of this work that I'm really interested in when it comes around childcare, looking at our permitting process. That's already going to be able to continue with the five minutes, we'll be able to continue that work in 26. So I don't have any additional requests at this time.
Go ahead, Steve.
We still are going to come back and hopefully soon in a week or so about maybe the timing of the discussion last week on fuel impact enterprise. If there's still a chance for us to say we want to take advantage of something now versus later. We're going to have that discussion hopefully in the next week or so. So that might be a slight change based on last week's discussion and information. So we need to know what that last date is to make that decision.
Well, and so in the budget, we have appropriated a full expenditure and revenue for those fuel enterprise. Not for any purpose, but spending authority.
It's accounted for in the budget. Yeah, the total amount and where we apply it.
On purpose. Alright.
Kathy?
Thanks. The only thing I, I would like to flag too, I mean, it kind of goes along with, yeah, like state connected to human services. And I mentioned this to Dr. Kelly when Steve and I met with her and earlier in the week. Is looking at support services or funding for rapidly growing senior population. And the older Americans Act is being, there are big cuts coming there. And it really, like Dr. Area Agency on aging is really just looking at how they support basic needs primarily food and transportation. But, but I, so I don't have a specific ask other than to, that we want to collab, I'd like to collaborate with the health department or with human services on any way we can. And I, I've kind of approaching this and getting, but anyway, that would be my ask.
That's great. Um, the human services proposed budget has a business case for services like that. Katie, remind me how much is in that? Is it 3 million?
Or is the year aging services?
1.5.
1.5. Got it mixed up with something else. And so there is an amount in that. Katie could talk if you'd like today about what services we provide with that. But that was a decision a prior board made about three years ago to provide that support. To fill the gap for services that we know our community needs that aren't able to be met by the AAA, the Dr. Cog.
Okay. No, I mean, I don't think we need to do that right now. I mean, I guess I'm also sort of flagging that that's something that I would like to kind of formalize like more like. I know we're all doing support, but maybe just what it looks like in trying to meet the ACAN folks back in to these conversations. Because as that does still exist, I don't know how long it will exist, but.
Okay.
So that's just kind of a flag and an ask for if there's anything we can do in 2026.
Yeah.
More, but I mean, but it's great to know what we have. And I just also like to help.
I just wanted to know, we have a placeholder in the budget for that. We do have a set of services that we have, you know, three years funded with that budget. But if we, you want to come over, I think it might be helpful if you're at the podium, I want Katie to have a chance to tell you what we pay for with that.
Yes, but I do want to be clear that we capture that's a priority that we want to make sure as we have solicited from the board. Appreciate that.
And so Kristen was correct with both, both numbers. 3 million was what was originally awarded for really looking at ways to expand services for our aging population. What we found is that we weren't able to contract that full amount. And so we bracketed that down to, last year was 1.5 million, this year is 1.2 million. To really right size what we are able to provide and that is the Mails on Wheels program through the BOA as well as social supports for adults and some minor home repair type of contracting as well. I think altogether we have four contracts and can certainly bring back more detailed information about what is in those particular scope of works and, and how we support the community and that. But we have heard that it is helpful in meeting those extra needs from that gap of services that we were seeing.
To remove over a short gap in, what? Home care, but it's not home healthcare, it's home like chore.
Yeah, helping with chores, helping bringing groceries. Some of it's also used for medical type rights if somebody needs to get to a doctor's appointment, things of that nature. So really was able to target a part of our county that was underserved in that, knowing that Dr. Cog really focuses much of their services on the metro area. This allowed us to really reach much further into the eastern part of our county.
Great. Can I just have a question since you're up there, Katie? What is the funding source? And depending on that probably will, my, my other question is how would we increase it if we have the capacity to increase it? Is really what we don't know, we can anticipate that support for families is going to look harder in 26. Probably really full effect in 2027. So like the back to school bash and your North Pole, the North Pole was like sold out. I mean, I saw it on social media. I literally circled back 30 minutes later and it was sold out. What does, what does capacity look like depending on the funding source of us serving more families?
So the, what's in the proposed budget is equal to what we've provided in previous years. So we didn't request more of the board in that. Certainly something that if you all have that desire, we could look at serving more families. We know the need exists. The funding source is through the Human Services Fund 15, which is the mill that we utilize. So that's true for, for the aging services as well as what we support with those community events. I also just want to like, we do financially support those community events, but we really built a model where we're relying a lot of, on a lot of good relationships and partnerships with businesses and with community-based organizations. And so it's not something that the county is funding in full at those relationships and cross-departmental collaborations really have made them, I think, unique and also rewarding for families.
I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
So that when, help me understand, so the, the money that, that was allocated, how much was it for the, the one that we served, 2 million?
For the aging and adult services, 1.2 million.
In, in the past?
3 million was what we originally thought or estimated was going to be the need as we started to build up the program. We recognized that what we were spending was closer to the 1.2 million dollar mark. And so instead of requesting 3 million from you, we requested what we're actually spending over the last two years as we built up the program.
So, but in the past we did, how many times did we budget 3 million?
This would be the third year.
Got it.
Well, last year we budgeted three, or two years ago, we budgeted 3 million. Last year we budgeted 1.5. This year I'm requesting 1.2.
And then every time we didn't spend, that money went back into the GF, right?
Correct.
Same questions, just let you know.
Unbalanced, yes. And now you're asking, no needs are going to be going up because as, as other sources. So, so, cause it's something we could do in amendment as the year goes on.
Yeah, and I really like approaching what we can do is report back to the board what we're seeing in terms of the usage and spending. You know, first quarter, second quarter and, and see if there's an amendment we need to come back with. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I really appreciate that. You know, I love the North Pole event. It's my favorite. I have, I have a, I have a conference so lame. I'm going to be out of town at a conference and I booked it. I swear two days later, you came back with the dates and I was like.
If Santa could get from one side of the place to the other.
Yeah, on the day of North Pole. So y'all have to wear your little elf ears and like do the hot chocolate for me is the best day of the year.
We will make sure we get, work with comms to get you a good video.
I will rap, like I will, like, I don't know, what, what do we need to do in advance? We don't rap in advance. Whatever needs to happen, I will do it. But in the past, one of the things, and I know this is like, I'd email, we'll have a commentary. This has been one of the things that inspired individuals also help give. And so like, what do like Amazons come through at different times? Like we've, you know, prevailed on a Kohl's manager to give us an extra discount. Like, what does that mean? What does that look like? How do we leverage our buying power? What do people who are inspired in community, how can they give? What's the legal way to do that? We do this. It's so beautiful. Need is going to be going up. How do we grow a folks ability to contribute? Who's our nonprofit partner? Like, what is that looking like for encouraging community participation in generosity?
Appreciate that. And I'm sure I will weigh in as well. We are very fortunate to have the relationships we have. So through the workforce board that you all are aware of, that's how we gained the relationship with Amazon. Was the, the president of that board saying, hey, this is a really neat event. We can't, we don't accept those gifts. Be the source is our
Nonprofit fiscal partner.
Nonprofit who helps us manage the, the gifts that we receive. And I also say the sheriff's department has also played, always played a big role. So not only is it businesses and community-based partners, but it's also the relationships and some of the funders that the sheriff's office has been able to, to continue to give. And so we really rely on those, those important relationships and partnerships.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll, I'll just add from, from the legal standpoint, where Katie's always walking this line and trying to make sure she doesn't, that I, I don't say, why are you dying? Um, the issue we potentially have is that our state law and our code of ethics prohibit county employees from receiving gifts. Right. And, and the issue under our code of ethics is the propriety of county employees asking for donations.
Right.
And then the assumption that businesses may be giving us those donations in order to court favor with the organization, right? So what we try to do is avoid like employees going door to door to businesses asking for donations, right? And so trying to keep it more high level to Katie's point about for our connections. It's not really, there's nothing that prohibits the gift because it's, it's not to a county employee. It's going to these citizens. It's not to a county employee, it's going to these, um, citizens in need or residents in need. It's just, we have to be a little careful about how we go about the solicitation. So that it doesn't look like someone's courting favor with a county employee. It's it's less risky with Katie's employees than it is like if I were doing it or Dion was doing it, right? Because we have more influence. But that's the issue that we're always trying to walk that line with our, with our, yeah, with our ethics officer, so.
This is also why we got into the whole notion of. We can't talk about that now, the whole Adams County Foundation and how we've gone back and forth on a potential strategy multiple times over the last few years. My question was gonna be around the fund balance. We've been taking that fund balance down. We have a different fund balance do we have associated with your department?
So we have a child welfare reserve. And then we have the one fund balance.
Yeah, it's it's also the social services fund fifteen, it's all one fun.
And that's one we've been like spending down from fifteen million down to five this year?
Yes, that's that's the one that, yeah, we're talking about when we're talking about SNAP and and some of these other areas. About monitoring that fund balance and we are watching it and working with social services and watching it real close.
We think we might get to five pretty soon.
I think that was sort of, we were discussing scenarios that led us to give you that notification. Scenarios have improved since those early days, like we talked about, we are getting snap admin dollars.
Scenarios, like we talked about this morning. With the uncertainty with the shutdown, so Head Start and SNAP and other things, uh, we're monitoring the fund balance really closely. Because there is some, we don't know what the end date is for some of those. Going on right now, um, and there's potential if it continues and we have to cover beyond November. That we will have a lot of pressure on the fund balance.
I I ask because we haven't been spending it down. And the goal of any fund balance, no matter where it is, how big it is, is that it's, I use the term rainy day, right? Like difficult times. Each time we've made the decision to start spending some of these things down, we're like, well, it is a rainy day today, and then all of a sudden we wait a little later and. Oh, shoot, this is the worst rainy day. Oh, shoot, like, I just.
Lot lately, and I don't like it.
I know, and it gets, it's like, it's almost like the the weather's getting worse each day, and you're like, wow, this rain. I would love to have had the one two weeks ago, or two months ago, or six months ago, when we thought it was a rainy day then. I just want us to keep in mind that that means that we have to think about what the rainy days are gonna look like in three and six months from now. If if certain conditions continue, so that's all I'm asking us to do is just.
I I think that, um, I really have appreciated, uh, Dion and, uh, Kristen and the Budget Office, uh, intentionality around this. We know that we have, uh, the dollars with the N Fund fifteen, we know that we have a policy about, uh, hitting a five million dollar mark. Uh, and we'll have the opportunity if we need to, through the amendment process, to as we're monitoring all of this, to make. Some of these decisions if and when that time comes. Um, it is, I just want to reinforce, uh, it is, we are still drawing down our administrative funds for SNAP administration. And when we originally had that conversation with you, uh, the information we had received is that those weren't going to be available to us. But now that they are, uh, that does, uh, make a a large difference in our planning. We've heard positive things from, uh, maybe the two people working in the office of Head Start right now. Uh, about anticipating that those funds will be available once the government, um, is is, uh, back on. For lack of a better term, so, uh, mostly positive, uh, information at this point.
It it's still, it's. It it's still forecast, like weather forecast, and I'm just saying, while we may expect a little bit to be a little bit more sunnier tomorrow. And our experience over the last six months is that overall, week after week, it still continues to get worse. So I just say, I'm like, we have to be really cautious about. Blowing it all on today's rainy day when tomorrow might be worse. That's all I'm just wanting us to keep in mind. And I think we're all aware of it, by the way, it's almost like without.
You would agree, and we're working with this budget and finance team to put together. Some tools to monitor fund balance and to show you visually some scenarios. We'll be reporting back to you on social services fund balance on a very regular basis.
So the next couple of slides are just, uh, a summary of some proposed changes from the, uh, from the proposed budget. To the adopted budget, and we wanted to run these by you and make sure all of them were, uh, well, many of these were based. We already discussed in prior study sessions or were based on commissioner feedback or feedback from departments, and so. Putting that in front of you, just so there's some clarity on if someone looks at proposed versus adopted, what changed and why. Um, and so the first line item there is, um, uh, Dion alluded to this earlier. Is an additional amount, um, in the budget for the sheriff's office to fund the accelerated deputy pay plan, that's sort of their. It's not, it's not a stepping grade, but that's how I think of it. Um, it it is a little bit more than the two point seven five percent, and you can see that here. Um, it's a cost to the general fund of about seven hundred and thirty thousand or twenty seven thousand dollars. This is also consistent with the way we've funded it in years past. Has just a little bit higher than, uh, non-certified, uh, staff throughout the county, so this only is for. Uh, remind me, it's for.
Deputy, senior deputy detective.
Yeah, so it's it's like deputy level positions within the sheriff's office.
This as a recruitment tool several years ago. They were finding it was hard to recruit those lower level positions because other agencies moved people more quickly. Through pay grades than we were, and so they came to the board and asked to implement this new. Strategy that moves their salaries up more quickly these first few years.
And I guess from the top, I'll say that all of these changes that we are, uh, putting in front of you, we have done the analysis and they are affordable, we're not. Putting something that can't be afforded in the budget.
I really appreciate finding these small items, they're expensive, but finding these small items because the cost of training. Particularly in the sheriff's office is so significant that retention matters. And there's such a tendency, and we do it too, but in other jurisdictions, to poach laterals. And and our ability to keep people in a job that they like, uh, and keep them here, I think is really important.
So the next two items are changes to recommended positions, and you can kind of see what those are there, and that's based on. Uh, feedback from, uh, the sheriff and the district attorney respectively. And you can see that there is a cost associated with, um, the position they've requested. It's a higher priority to them is a little bit more expensive, and that's that bottom line there, so for the sheriff. Um, switching from a training coordinator to an investigative analyst is a. A sixteen thousand dollar annual impact on the general fund salary and benefits. And same with the, in the district attorney, it's a twenty two thousand dollar change, um, minus. The double Ks for the original position.
I do think like in the future for these guys, I I still have never been able to figure out, like. Flat Rock considered like the golf course where it's got its own fund, or you guys at least track it that way.
It has its own fund.
In the room, just now what I said there, there was at least two people that nodded this way into the.
Well, they're not truly an enterprise fund, they're not actually.
They are a special revenue fund, um, the collects money out there, that money that's collected is used out there to continue their operations. Repave their driving track, all of the, it's self-sustaining. Um, as an enterprise fund would be, but it's not called when it doesn't incur depreciation, it doesn't hold its own assets. This position is actually in the general fund, though.
That this is where I'm going, is that at some point this same board has to kind of figure out sometimes, and it's happened with all five sheriffs I've ever talked to. Like which horse are you riding? That it's self-sustain where you get to keep the funds that you generate? And then then say, don't worry and don't overs, have any oversight over how we spend that. But then when I need it, I'm gonna come to the bank and ask for more things for the same organ, like for the same thing. It's just a challenge, and I think like you guys at some point, like I've literally, I'm not joking, four or five, and they're all wonderful people, I'm just saying like. It does create a very difficult scenario for me to have to explain it to others, and I still have never been able to explain it other than. There there's some money that's generated at Flat Rock. We usually just rubber stamp it because it's used at Flat Rock, but we let the sheriff pretty much make that decision. And but it's not a complete self-sustaining entity, it's just they get to keep that fund and use it, and then. We are still going to be asked periodically to spend general fund dollars on things like this and others.
Yeah, so for like a training coordinator. It may have some nexus to training outside entities for their post cadets through their training program, their, um, it. But we also have to train our inter, their internal people, so it's really a general fund cost of training people typically don't end up at Flat Rock. They're called Flat Rock Training Coordinators because that's where they live and work, but they're training the entire agency, which typically a general fund cost. So it's, the title is misleading, maybe.
It it's the same conversation we're gonna have about the the gun thing. The gun background checks at some point, like, uh, uh, at what level is it self, self-funded versus? Versus us, and we have to be cautious about being able to explain to somebody that we're paying not for an enterprise, but we're paying for our costs.
And we're not recommending funding the training coordinator position because the sheriff is tied to investigative analyst instead. Right, just for clarity.
Yeah, thank you.
So yeah, so the change would be, uh, there would, instead of a training coordinator, we'd have an investigative analyst, and instead of an intake receptionist. For the FJC, we would have a second navigator. The last one there I, uh, addressed in the, uh, one-time impact and capital improvement review study session on the twenty first. But I wanted to note it here just so everything was together. The CIP committee did recommend a general fund portion for the Riverdale Bluffs, which is supported. Not entirely, but in large part by public land dedication fees. And so. Recommending we put that in based on the CIP recommendation, so that would be a change from proposed to adopted budget. So next slide.
I'm sorry, so it's the Bluffs, the Bluffs fund, I'm I'm not tracking it.
So parks have requested Riverdale Bluffs to be funded in part in the Open Space Projects Fund. And then also in part in the general fund, using these public land dedication fees that are referenced, uh, in the, in the table there. When I migrated the CIP requests from the CIP portal into our budget system, I only took the Open Space Projects part. I forgot to do the general fund component of it, they caught it, let me know, and so this is putting that back in, supported by those public land dedication fees.
It's one point four million in twenty six of general fund going to the Bluffs.
It would be one point four million of the public land dedication fees which are held in the general fund. Going towards the Bluffs project. In fact, you'll see that, you'll you'll see the public land dedication fees, uh, spoiler alert, they're on the. Budget amendment that we're talking to you next, we're asking to put that spending authority to transfer that money. As they start to spend down the the Bluffs project.
I have a quick question.
Did you add seven hundred thousand for the Bennett property?
So we did not, usually when we do like acquisitions and things like that, we'll handle it on an amendment, so we don't have, uh. Here's what we're willing to pay price tag sitting out there in our budget. Um, as we're doing negotiations, that's sort of how we've done it in the past.
We do have a request coming forward with minimal detail on that.
All right, I I don't want to miss out the opportunity. And you're saying, don't, don't conflate a missing out on the opportunity from missing it out and putting it on the budget, that's what I'm here.
Yeah, for that.
What you're saying is like what Kathy brought up is anytime you say not to exceed, they're gonna get right to that level.
Yep, exactly.
And and for something like that, we would probably just have a special amendment, we wouldn't wait for the quarterly, you know, the schedule, we would just say. Do this purchase.
That is a, there's a. But it's not worth anything, so.
In turn, we do have kind of a placeholder for, we know that it's coming and we are. Okay, thank you.
Uh, and so these are a couple of business cases, um, that were not included on the proposed budget. Uh, that we're proposing, that we're. Putting back in, um, you'll see those top two, we heard in study session, um, commissioner feedback on training for. Uh, the deputies and also, um, the anti-fentanyl protection gear, and so you can kind of see. The the change that's being proposed is to, for the fentanyl gear, um, changing it from not recommended, um, it was. Originally submitted as ongoing, but after working with the sheriff's office, we've found out that's a one time, they just need to purchase the gear. Um, and then the forty thousand is an on, oh, ongoing expense, additional training for the detectives. So we're, you know, putting those back in. We have the, uh, twenty thousand dollars for the Taza Gallery, um, those. Funds would come from the percent for the arts program, which has a balance in the general fund, and so there's. Uh, funding available for that, um, but. One of the changes we're recommending is instead of just programming it year over year ongoing, is doing it on one time. Because if those funds were to be depleted, then maybe we wouldn't. Move forward, or we would want you to have the opportunity to say, this is not the year to do.
Question, that what is the Taza Gallery again?
I think that's the, it's the art that they have down by the poppy.
We'll be paying twenty thousand dollars, we buying all the art?
That I don't know.
I don't understand how it costs twenty thousand dollars to swap out.
There's no art people in here, I don't know who to ask that question to.
That was a question, right, like.
Is it literally just the hanging of the art over the course of the year, it takes.
Service like, hi, I'm Art Tanger LLC.
A pothole job that you're gonna get later.
We can get an answer for you on that.
Brian's avoiding eye contact with you, so I don't think that the now.
I don't do art.
Do you see what I'm asking?
Yeah, well, that what is, what is the twenty thousand? So, uh, we can follow up.
We'll we'll get back to you.
I do like the one that Brighton, so Lynn brought up the fact they do it in Brighton, and I don't know if it's a paid service or.
Not to say there's not an expensive, you know, a committee, a dinner, hanging of the art on the day, um, so. They they do just a call for artists and the artists donate their art for a time period, then they get it back.
I would love to use.
We do, we do some, we have, we have, it's here sometimes, and some of the projects are installation. The tiny children's.
So I can read the description they provided if that might be helpful. So cultural arts features rotating ex- exhibitions in the Taza get Taza Gallery. In the government center with four installations per year. We work with a variety of local and regional artists and art organizations to curate those shows. Shows often include community engagement, receptions and artist talks. And develop in into deeper collaboration and partnerships, costs cover artist stipends, community engagement and events. Signage, artwork, hardware and other project costs, so it costs money to host and put it on.
The cost is what?
It's just, it's just all the cost of hosting and putting on an event and having people show up and. And develop.
They do have, um, opening, you know, like, um. We did have all the kids come for that one in the hallway to the east of the.
The music, it was so neat, the like sound wave.
Yeah, yeah.
That was so neat.
But they're giving artist stipends too, that's probably for the creation of what we got.
And there, I think there are four showings per year, so if you divide that by four, it's five thousand dollars.
The event and the stipends, it makes more sense, thank you.
Us to turn the art over and have.
Good question.
Yeah, we're not paying somebody that's not paying for the hanging of the art.
And then the the last item, uh, was for placer AI, uh, for parks, um. That's, uh, Bu- Byron brought that up when he saw that it wasn't, uh, recommended to move forward, and so in discussions. Uh, it's pretty integral to understanding who's attending our events and all that, I mean, most of what you discussed earlier today was based on the data. Provided by that, or a part of it, I should say, uh, and so we're recommending that that is built in. Um, and then not on the list, but discussed in your, uh, previous study session would be the additional amount for the fair. Um, which we would probably put in as a one-time cost based on your discussion, and then as you guys flesh out the fair for twenty twenty seven. We can normalize the budget then, but giving them the spending authority to go for. giving them the spending authority to go for option four with the twenty twenty six budget would be included there. Uh, there were a couple of business cases removed and it's, it's a little bit misleading to call them removed. These were, uh, we discussed these, uh, a couple of different times in our study sessions. The funding for Head Start, uh, is not impacted by taking this business case out. They planned that, that this was a flag for their additional costs, uh, for the annual employee investment. Um, so we don't need to actually have it as an approved business case. Um, the, the way the budget was kind of handled in the system covers those costs. And it's the same for the public health fund. If you remember, they had the, the list of grants they were not sure they would get back in May. And then they received them or whatever they didn't receive, they adjusted their operating expenditures accordingly. For that, so, um, again, as a note, uh, just so if anyone looks from one budget to another to find out what changed. And then the, the last little note there is we did have a transfer or not a transfer, it's not a transfer anymore. The contribution from the general fund to public health contemplated these as business cases. And since they're not needed as business cases, that the contribution was reduced by the same amount. Um, I've kept this slide on, I think, everything we've shown you, just to remind you that, uh, this was the lens that we have approached the budget, uh, through all year. Um, I don't think there's a need to go through it in its entirety. It's, uh, I guess you could call it the, uh, the theme of the budget for twenty twenty six. And so I just can't bring it to myself to take it out. So that, that's the summary of the changes to the budget. Um, wanna make sure there's no additional feedback on that or that, all of those are supported so that we can lock down the budget, uh, tonight and get it posted for public review. Um, and then the current plan is to be in public hearing on November eighteenth, um, for adoption. So we would be posting publicly by the end of this week really, but we would have to by next week to, for public review.
I guess my general question about the budget is, are we uh, compared to our twenty five budget, are we below or did we landed, did we land below or above the twenty five budget?
I'm talking about bottom line, everything.
Yeah. I mean, cause right, we're gonna see a decrease in revenue in twenty seven. So like, are we staying stable? Are we decreasing in anticipation of the twenty seven budget shift? Yep. How far is twenty? How hard is this whole budget conversation gonna be next year?
So, uh, everything we've done in building the twenty six budget has been with that future year outlook. We don't, we, we wouldn't recommend we adopt a budget next year that would be unsustainable in the following year. So what we've done is where we have our operating revenues and our operating expenditures in the general fund, there's currently a gap. So we have, our revenues are higher than what we spend month to month on our regular operating, which creates, uh, room for us to have inflationary costs next year into twenty twenty seven. Contemplate, contemplate a pay plan in twenty twenty seven. We still have room even with the projected decrease. We were, we were building our costs so that we could be sustainable and still, uh, have a robust budget in twenty twenty seven, where we don't have to make drastic changes. So, uh, the goal is that we don't have a, we've seen it coming, so we don't have a, a real problematic budget. We've been consistently um, consistent with the message of, you know, being careful what we add in ongoing and how many FTEs. So that's really gonna afford us the opportunity in twenty twenty seven to not have to take uh, terribly drastic action. So we can still continue, um, to grow reasonably, I believe, and, and even in twenty twenty seven.
I don't think it's gonna be an ongoing conversation for the next several years. I don't, I don't think that it's a one year flip. Um, you know, as we look at the projections for that gap between revenue and expenditures, the gap's got getting a little smaller and twenty eight, twenty nine, smaller. And so we, we do have to manage how much reasonable growth in the budget is. And of course, who knows what the economic conditions will be like, that may be up or down, but really are trying to have that outlook of moderating and smoothing out that, um, growth over the next couple of years. We don't have non-intentional cliff.
I do think, I do think it's fair, verified, like, yeah. You said, uh, uh, how does it differ from this year to this year? Because are we taking into account the dip?
Yeah.
And the, there's two parts to that. Number one is, is the dip a dip in the rate of increase? Or is the dip a dip in actual revenues?
So the dip is a dip, dip in actual revenues. Our budget, we, we have a, so to walk through.
Then, then going back to the original question, you, you answered, we did take into account future years sustainability. But the budget this year is still gonna be greater than the budget was last year.
Yes.
And that's a different question, but it's one that you asked.
Yeah, well, and really what I'm trying to hone in on is what is our messaging when you're in the public hearing, presenting this budget? Our nonprofit community is watching, our residents are watching. What message are we sending with this budget? And that we're also preparing ourselves in a very responsible way for the twenty seven dip, um, that's ahead. So just making sure that we're on point with that messaging of what we're talking about, what we were able to achieve in this budget cycle. How is it compared to last year? Like, those are gonna be really important things to clearly communicate to the public when we talk about this in our public hearing.
Yep. So overall, um, total county budget will be about eight hundred and thirty seven million dollars for twenty, oh, wait, this is twenty twenty five.
Oh, good.
Sorry, hang on one second.
Sorry, my bad.
There you go. So I'm sorry, eight hundred and sixty seven million is what we're at right now for, um, operating for expenditures and revenues of eight hundred and seventy six million. So we are actually under our revenues as a whole across all funds by ten million dollars. And that includes a, a fairly large capital expenditure, uh, plan of sixty five million dollars. So that's really where we have a lot of wiggle room is how much we have, we build into our capital each year. Um, our operating, of course, we, we have to live within the revenues that are coming in, so we're not living on our savings. So operating in is operating out. And then we use the fund balance for capital, but in this particular budget, as we've proposed the adoption, um, we have a large capital contribution to our program, but we're not even using uh, fund balance. We're still funding that with operating revenue at this point. So we still have, uh, we'll maintain healthy reserves next year. Uh, we're not gonna, we're still planning on that uh, trouble ahead, but we're being, I think, cautious.
So i- in twenty twenty five, you said eight thirty seven.
Yep.
Eight, and then in twenty twenty six, it's eight sixty seven. We've gone up thirty million dollars. But it's, it's to cover the cost of increases. Well, but when we do hit the dip, we are still, that just because it goes up thirty doesn't mean we're not gonna be ready for the dip. That's and somebody who's looking at this and they're just paying attention to the bottom line is gonna maybe make different conclusions or statements than we. So I'm just saying like, we just need to be prepared as, as Julie says, all of us. This is not a conversation right here. It's a conversation here. How to answer that question. Does that make sense? Like?
Yeah.
Is going up thirty million and we're gonna say, we know it's gonna go down, but it's some of that thirty million is stuff that may not be there next year anyway. So it's not always.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're careful to keep our operating within affordability. And we're using fund balance as needed for capital in one time. Uh, but we're living within our means.
And so if we hit a dip, it'll probably cut more into that one time expense from the previous year rather than operations.
Yes.
That's what I want.
So it'll be really important to have those talking points to talk about for our ability to talk about the budget. Um, you know, not only in the public hearing, but you know, throughout the community, as people have asked questions. Um, and how that looks. And also in the public hearing, just because this is my first time doing it. Do you guys have like a PowerPoint presentation that you show? I mean, I'm just not really good with numbers being thrown at me verbally. So.
We'll have a couple of highlight, uh, PowerPoint slides to talk about the total budget, how much is going towards capital. Uh, where are we at? Um, but most of it will be a referral to our, our budget book, which will be online, which has a lot more detail that we probably don't want to get into that budget adoption during the hearing, but we could if we'd like. But typically that's how we've handled it. Just a, a brief overview introduction, county manager would typically say a few comments, you know, about the letter, because we have, you know, sort of the overview letter, which talks about priorities and where we're, the lens we've looked at the budget through. So, um, we won't go really deep into the weeds during that meeting.
Well, and I will say, um, with respect, that's what we've done in the past is fine, but I do intend to have, uh, more level setting to, to your point, um, just for the public record about the approach with the budget and also just what we're anticipating and how we are getting ready for that. And also just what are the priorities that are showing up in this budget? Uh, I think it's important to highlight the line by line detail. You're right. I mean, that is not something we would wanna go through in the hearing, but it will be available online and I'm sure.
Well, we could do an FAQ on the website, some anticipated questions.
Yeah. And I think the budget message that we have, we had in the proposed and will have again with the adopted, covers a lot of of what Dion mentioned in terms of priorities and.
Just something that people can easily get to.
Yes. The great thing about the budget book
Yes.
is the first few pages really recognizes the, the efforts of the budget staff. And then Dion, the county manager usually provides, um, like the overview, are you gonna include in that or could you include in that? It, it is, um, it's not a trend, it's an effect on our budget, like how the house bills affect the property tax reductions affect. Because it's really, um, a historical document as well as that you can go back and you know, as we move on and we will, um, that you can really go back and say, oh, there was this and there was this and um, you know, in the.
Love to have unfunded mandate section or a legit or, or regulatory.
Just to narrate what this process really was. Yeah.
I mean, that, the unfunded mandate piece might be hard. This is more than that because the two significant property tax cuts from the legislature slash the governor on top of HR one have really compounded in such a way, uh, with a cooling housing market to make the twenty twenty seven planning lean at best.
Yeah, I think that context is really important. In previous budget letters have done that, um, you know, COVID was, um, you know, accounted for, ARPA was counted for in previous budget letters. It is
External fact, externalities, external factor.
There are many to share.
I like that idea. Thank you, Lynn.
Okay. Well, that, that does not conclude our presentation.
Next.
Try.
Do you want me to answer? I, I did get info on the gallery.
I think we got the detail.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry.
Pulled up the business case.
Okay, perfect detail.
Um, so the last little bit we have to ke- to go over here is, uh, just reviewing the memberships and sponsors, uh, sponsorships, it's a lot of ships. Um, though, before you, we have, you know, what the process is that the, the different entities make a request, you all review, um, the what they've requested and approve it. Um, and then the, when the event happens or, or if it's an annual support, they send us an invoice and we pay it. Uh, and so kind of by the numbers, you can see historically, we're right around a million dollars in these, uh, you know, chambers of commerce and special events and things like that. Um, as of right now, um, the total request for twenty twenty six is about two hundred thousand dollars less than the, the prior years. Knowing that there's some that, uh, probably some stragglers and haven't got their request in and things of that nature. Um, the message I want to give you is there is enough budget to cover what's been requested. And there's also enough budget to cover an increase. Um, and we did not up the budget from last year. It stayed flat along with, uh, all the other operating lines. There was no business case to increase it or anything like that. So keeping that in mind as we go through, um, you know, I don't know if we wanna go line by line through all the, the different sponsorships down below. Um, I know we have, uh, Erica and Lindsay are here for support on a little bit more of the details there if we need it. But before you are the different requests, um, you kind of see how that flows, those numbers in twenty four and twenty five tied to the prior numbers. Um, and what they've requested this year as well as what that includes. Um, and so we can kind of just go through these and stop where you have questions or we can go line by line, uh, however, whatever is the board's pleasure on this.
Yep. Thanks. Uh, so starting with the top line of the AC rep, I would like to fully fund their request of two hundred thousand dollars because I know they're not, there are different benefits, um, associated with that, but this is the Adams County Regional Economic Partnership. We're funding a more economic development council at three hundred thousand dollars a year. And I don't understand why we would quibble over twenty grand. That does have an impact on AC rep.
That's a full activity they can't, can or cannot do.
Yeah, that's, that's like a bus tour or something. That's, that's a lot, that's a big, um, and so I would just like to see that, that request fully funded. I know we have actually, I think, and I know I shouldn't be, this is a question, have we funded them at a high, at more than two hundred thousand dollars in the past?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
There's a lot of history on that.
And why we're, why we're, uh,
This is the last year's budget. So the one eighty is not what we're recommending. That's what they were funded at last year. They requested an increase and we're supportive of that.
Yeah. And so everything that's in the re- requested column.
Numbers, that's a problem.
The years are confusing because we're, we're always thinking about next year's budget. So. Yeah, but I, but I also would like to kind of have this discussion about, about funding, how we fund AC, how much we've had AC rep year over year.
Yeah. And I'm just gonna flag that last bullet, the new trade mission event. We do anticipate that there may be an additional budget request for that event. I think it's important, you know, if we think that we have capacity for that, the lead, we just need to be aware that that's two hundred thousand plus. I do think you're going to have additional requests related to that if we are moving forward with it. They just haven't given us the final.
Okay. Right. Because that's newly, that's it. That would be, that's because that would be a big new activity. Thank you for, uh, clarifying the numbers for me and the years. But then definitely I want to flag that when a request comes in about that trade mission trip that we, uh, definitely, uh, have, there'll be same capacity for that. Because I think that would be, I think it's important for us to support.
Of being more than two hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying if we do, if we do, but, so I mean, they requested two hundred from us. Okay.
That's before the trade mission event came up. This was their standard request and it's built into the total budget amount that they described at the beginning, which is a million plus.
Right, right. Okay. All right. Well then, yeah, so know, knowing that they've got a new event coming with the trade mission, then I guess I'm okay with that, you doing what, meeting their request, knowing that we might have another ask for participation and support through in twenty twenty six, as twenty twenty six proceeds.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
I, I think it's fair to ask like, and, and we've always, once we went from like a lot of, like almost three hundred thousand for AC rep. There was a lot more scrutiny. I was really very inconsistent, but I would say that part of that also was with the expectation that they came to us more à la carte for some of these events. For additional, so like when you said, what you said, Dion, that's a hundred percent correct. So having a little buffer for that does help. We can also try to encourage front loading that planning, but I think it's just, that's the history.
Thank you. And I, and I understand that there's been, that AC rep has changed a lot in the last five, six years. So and, and, and so I, so I appreciate that. But I definitely, I'm just, I'm just sensitive to the fact that it's Adams County. That's our, our name in it. And we need to, uh, you know, we want to support their success and lean in on, and in it, not just with the money, but in participation. Um, with their events as much as we can to try to map, try to get, have, get the most benefits out of this relationship.
Can also maybe, uh, down the road, talked about how we can increase some of the service into that corporate affairs too.
Yeah.
You know, whether it's Bennett, Strasburg, Henderson, not just the Southwest, but all of that, like, as we start looking at federal markets, sharing all of it.
Well, and I just had a meeting with the mayor out in Bennett and she said the one thing they don't have is an urgent care. Not only do they not have an emergency room or a hospital, they don't have an urgent care. And I was like, well, you know who can help with that? Lisa Huff. So I ran into Lisa and I'm like, you have so many relationships with different medical providers, that kind of connection, the, a mayor and economic development team can go to the regional economic partnership and be like, hi, in our town, can you help us make a connection with a medical provider organization that could help us find the right fit for urgent care?
And it, and I think they did happen to.
They did, no.
But you're, yeah, good connect.
But it's about them being available across the county, they serve everyone everywhere.
So urgent care and or hospital services in Eastern Adams County has been a topic of discussion for a while.
For sure.
Um, the former Platte Valley Medical or Platte Valley Hospital. Um, it was that, did they have all changed provider names, um. So they are restarting, they meaning this provider is looking again at. As in Eastern Adams County, it was likely Bennett and I have a meeting with Dion and. I don't know who else is in that meeting with the health provider, so it's actually, I think, within the town of Bennett's. Within their township, um so we will definitely go forward with that, there's a long history of A C rep that we can't unpack now.
Okay.
I I I don't think that, I I think we can. Better utilize and leverage them and if we go forward as à la carte, I'm fine with that in twenty twenty six, um. I would like to see them take on the more publicity, I don't, I'm confused. Of our C E D's role and A C reps role in the the overlap or the. I don't know, competition of who does what or what they're. And so even like Ku- like Kuvo, we do a um.
Jazz thing.
The jazz thing, the sponsorship, I think that's like in A C reps lane, of really bringing in partners, she can really leverage. That sponsorship on behalf of Adams County rather than us being the host, we could be the.
There's no reason for us to be sponsoring somebody else's Jazz Fest.
There there's a number of other things that she's just been really instrumental in being the connector out in business, I mean, yes, I agree.
Did, did they remove? We, we actually almost gave direction, I thought on that earlier in the year when we were talking about, it may not have been clear. About re- removing marketing from C E D, having them focus on the other stuff.
So. Sort of, we committed to coming back to you for a conversation about what is the level of engagement with marketing and part of it is. A request, I know Julie Hudson or. To talk about what C E D's lane is, what A C reps lane is and clarifying that, um giving some clarity from you all, we haven't had that conversation yet. Um but that's where we landed with that, but we've heard loud and clear that uh the direction on the Kuvo event, um there's probably a better way for us to. Engage in that and maybe not through C E D.
Like I C S E, that's been removed?
You're not going, that's correct, we got a direction on that, there's no plan to go in twenty six.
I feel like that decision, even that. Direction was pu- does need to justify the bigger picture of lanes and role and. I appreciate that being brought up, so thank you.
Okay, we should look us to advance the slides to look at any additional ones for discussion.
Um, the only one I I looked forward, but um the only one I was curious about is um a precious child, so. On our list, I only saw two nonprofits, a precious child. And Almost Home, I don't think Casa counts, just because Casa's Casa and they're. Something I would like to support, but so precious, so precious child and Almost Home. Yeah, so we have the annual gala here, like I I guess my question is just like, how did a precious child get on here versus not somebody else?
They're a significant service provider and partner for our foster families and our families from human services. They serve almost the full spectrum of Adam Sky.
So your question was, I'm sorry.
So my question is, is why is a precious child on here in Almost Home but not other nonprofits?
Actually, it's um the, so there's a distinction a little bit between the memberships and the sponsorship sections of these slides. And these are events that we have historically participated in, there's probably a different story for each and every one of them. Um and so these are things that we know they're anticipating continued financial support from the county for these events. And so some of it's based on continuity of there, they have some donors that they sort of count on. And there's been some historic participation in those events by us for one reason or another, I would say. Uh but I think there's a relationship certainly with um our human services department and a precious child. The clients and the referrals and the things like that, and I think there's just been a longstanding connection and the. The initial reason is because they approached us in the past and the. Then board decided to sponsor a table and then that continued on until any new direction has been given.
You're absolutely right, so the way that the sponsorships and Erica has all the history and I'll just paraphrase. Um and then Erica, you can jump in if you I miss it, is that the sponsorships come to the board, so let's just say these are. Here, they're in the budget, then Erica will say, oh, this has been sponsored, not so much now, it's a little more automated, but. The board direction at the time is if we sponsored it. Before, we will sponsor, literally automatically sponsor it again. And then anything new that comes up for the board to consider for sponsorship, they'd be like, no, we didn't sponsor it in the past and you have to get an individual ticket. So that has led to some systemic. Blocking out um a number of associations and community-based organizations that. Might be more in alignment with this board that we may want to consider, so I don't know if we want to consider that in twenty six. We want to consider that in twenty seven, we fund it for twenty six and then we look at. Emma, we look at it going forward.
I completely agree, that is a very accurate summary. Also. Another reason we ended up in the logjam that we ended up in is because. That no one wanted to cut anything. And so like. How do we revisit? Okay.
Other than Kathy even.
That's it, like, but like, it's just like, no one wanted to cut anything, so basically it was decided that we were full. And we're just doing tickets from here on out, because every time we tried to have a conversation about it. It just became a logjam, because there was no cutting.
It's gonna fall into the category of previous conversations we've had, which is that it's it's November fifth and let's, and if we agree with what's been proposed. But that as things come to, because things come to us all the time, right, requests, then let's, it might take a little time. As they come in to to add them to all the lightning rounds, but let's and and then or and or have a study session on. Looking at dissecting this a little bit more, but right now.
Processing guidelines for how.
Or some, yeah, something like.
Invest those ongoing that has a little more clarity to it.
But for but for today, it's about like kind of what's in front of us and we what will come to us as twenty twenty six progresses.
Even then, I live in Erica.
I think over time, we realized we had, like Emma said, we had to get our arms around this and we kind of just closed the door. And then said, do we want to do this, in in the future, it will be a one-off basis, maybe like there was a special event. Or some, one of us is getting an award, so we're like, yes, we'll get a table or whatever, or something like that. Where we just say, everyone go get their tickets on your own, um but I will say that what at one point years ago. I remember I was, we were trying to, I I forget who I was working with, we created this kind of like matrix and said. If it's actually meeting one of our strategic goals or a strategic partner, and we had to figure out how to designate them. Then it would support, then we would just automatically add them to the budget because it's part of our strategic budget versus an ask. Versus, you know, so we can ask like Spark to help us. You know, kind of help us with some ideas of some criteria to help us with that, but we could also say. Come up with that for nonprofits, which right now we're doing like only one or two, but the answer was, if you open the gates. You know the flood will come and it does, um but I do think like, one thing I do appreciate is the sponsorships where we say. It's the same amount for each chamber, it's the same amount, you know, and there was some equity between Aurora and.
School districts are equal.
School districts, that's a perfect one, so like, that's helped us, and so I don't want to change that, but the nonprofits that are outside of kind of those. Topical categories, chambers, schools, we might be able to ask for a little bit of assistance moving forward, not on November fifth.
Yeah.
Uh but for next year.
I do have another question, have we ever been approached? Has anybody approached us from either Colorado Chamber or the Colorado Women's Chamber to?
Actually, yes.
Yes.
In the past, we were part of the.
I did not see those on our list.
In the past, we've been, we went asked, we joined the Asian Chamber and the Latino Chamber.
Yeah.
And then.
I think we've got. The Asian Chamber, we dropped significantly, it's just five hundred dollars now.
It used to be bigger when we were working with the Japan contingency with, we bumped it up during that time.
Well, and there there is some stuff like, I don't know, like the Dad's Day Golf Tournament. I don't know.
Yeah, I know, I I saw that too. I'm like, we're sponsor or we're participants, I didn't, I did, that that did surprise me.
Yep, it's a Colorado Building and Construction.
So I have a question, and then they also have, Lindsay was kind of. Picking her head out over there in the audience, so I guess the question is, on the sponsorships, are we fully committed to them now? No, and then did you have something to say? So I'm hearing, no, we're not committed to them now, they're just placeholders.
We're committing the budget that we want for the year, we may give some changes, but I've throughout years, we look at them.
Make changes.
Regardless, yeah, budget adoption, yeah.
So I guess, yeah, okay. Then.
Oh, I just said, we're committing the budget. Today, we're talking about the budget for the year, but what actually sponsored, we may. Change it.
Okay, yeah.
Don't yet have the requests from organizations with the amounts for the sponsorships. The memberships we do, but not the sponsorships, okay, so the the process we've been doing as some of some of you relate now commissioners is. Looking at the list and saying, this is the list that we did last year. For this year, yes, great. And then all we are bringing to you all throughout the year is any changes, so if the price changes on one that's on the list. Or if we get a new request, come to the board and say what you'd like to sponsor or individual tickets. That's been the process, not say can't change, that's the process for today.
Okay.
So for discussion today, it's just budget, it's just budget. But we're gonna have a time when we could talk about which items we want to potentially remove or add.
Great.
Is that?
Love it, yes, okay.
Be added to that list of, let's talk about it.
Let's talk about it later.
Growing list.
Okay.
The list is back.
It's the list.
So we are scheduled to be with Mark and Mark from until two o'clock, so we have like ten minutes.
End of the presentation.
Yeah.
You made it.
This is, yeah, so this is um, that's it. Uh the moral of this story is there is sufficient budget for what is currently in front of you and as things change throughout the year. Uh you have flexibility to to respond to those changes or or new or reductions or whatever you decide to do.
I do understand why you have a buffer, because we will want to stay with C C for C A C cat and the ones that haven't asked. But you just know that we're gonna C S two.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right.
That is all we have uh for the twenty twenty six budget until November eighteenth. In public hearing.
Let's talk about twenty twenty five.
But let's talk.
We do have one more.
Because we do have the, an amendment to discuss. This year's budget. In three days.
Okay, I'm gonna step on my call.
Well, now we are set talking about 2026, we're back to 2025. So this is our third amendment here to the budget. And we'll just kind of do a quick overview here of our amendments are done throughout the year. We kind of have the slide in every presentation, but we have done our first carryover amendment earlier this year, and then we just did our second amendment back in September of 2025. And then our third amendment here will include mid-year FTE requests, some revenue transfers and announce for projects, and then some emerging capital needs that have been re-prioritized. As Mark mentioned before, we're trying to get onto a schedule for amendments, so they are more routine and they are not kind of one-off and ad-hocs. We're trying to just, we'll have that schedule set up for. Okay, so these are all new requests. As you remember in the second one, we kind of had a list of both new requests and ones that had been addressed via study session. All of these are all brand new requests, so there are no real ones. There's a couple of FTE ones, I think, that are that have been addressed in study session, but more or less, these are all new requests. So first, we have the crime victim compensation grant. This is from the DA's office. This is in N and L, we have a revenue offset to the expenditure. Our second one is what Mark Cluthen talked about before with our public land dedication fees going to the open space project funds for the Riverdale Bluffs project. This will be where we're putting in the budget and then we will be transferring those dollars to the open space project fund as needed as they complete the project. So this is just establishing the whole dollar amount, but it'll only be transferred out as needed. Questions about that? Next, we have the graphic designer FTE. This is a move from a move to the public health department from the communications department. We're just de-appropriating their salary in the general fund. And then finally, in the last one in the general fund is for the IT department where we're having an additional. They had, they sent us a contract adjustment where we have more users based off of our budget, so we have an increase. And just, we just got an updated invoice yesterday that it increased to instead of the seventy-eight point nine, it's now up to eighty thousand seven oh seven, so we will have that as an adjusted number on the actual amendment that you will approve. So just note that that instead of seventy-eight eight ninety-seven, it's going to be eighty thousand seven oh seven, so just about an eighteen hundred dollar increase.
Approved yesterday during public hearing this item, so we're catching up the budget to what actually is happening.
Any questions on the general fund items?
No, I just want to, and I don't know if this is really for budget. So on the public land dedication fee, I would still like to see, this isn't really related to the budget. Those completion dates on projects, so projects that are in process and those completion dates of when we will see those completed, all those numbers, as open space funds grant, projects that were sitting idle. If we can just get a recap of those and it just, it makes me curious if we have capacity to complete these. So if we are not completing these on time, I don't want to delay because as we delay, there's a lot of uncertainty on inflation and tariffs and a number of things and projects will get more expensive as we go on, but to make sure that we are using those funds responsibly and getting these projects done. Thank you.
Next, we have in the fleet fund. In here, you'll see two line items, kind of one offsetting the other one. The Colorado Spaceport is purchasing a fleet is purchasing for CASP a ground power unit, so we are transferring dollars from CASP into the fleet fund and then showing that the fleet fund is purchasing the unit. So just kind of an in and an out there.
And it's a little bit of a change. This was approved in the twenty twenty-five in CASP, CASPs. It's hard to say, CASP in the CASP budget. But due to the nature of how we treat most other vehicles and equipment, it's going to go through the fleet fund, so we gotta just move it across funds. It's not a change in, not a new project.
Okay, next, we're moving into the Road and Bridge Fund. Here you'll see the two change orders that have been addressed through Road and Bridge. This will be an item that will we will adjust as needed until it is approved by the board. We have it right, we have it in here right now as a placeholder. And then once it is finalized by the board, we will move it forward, but not until that point. So just know that it is still a to be determined. And then next you'll see a couple of other items for public works where we're de-appropriating some of their current budget for things that just won't be needed in twenty twenty-five. So those are just helping, those de-appropriations will just go back to their fund balance. Any questions regarding the Road and Bridge?
Wait, I'm sorry, can you explain the de-appropriation one more time?
Yeah, so the de-appropriating, they basically have the two point nine seven five million dollars in their budget right now as an expense that they can spend. And same thing with the consulting services. Brian has gone in there and says they will not be spending those dollars in twenty twenty-five. So we're removing that, that budget so it can go back to their fund balance and so it can be used for other projects.
Okay, does that stay in public? Oh, sorry, yes, sorry, okay, same thing, okay. To be reallocated, correct?
Yeah, that was part of our effort to lessen the impact of these change orders on the Road and Bridge Fund is to identify savings elsewhere within the fund for this year. So that, that full, what is that, nine? Nine million or so isn't just an added expense. We're also recognizing where there's savings to offset that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Brian, help me understand these other two change orders, the three point four and the five. Did we bring those to it? Like, I don't remember us going into the detail that you did last week on the others, on these two.
Did we bring those to it? Like, I don't remember us going into the detail that you did last week on the others, on these two. It doesn't say the, it should say York Street and then the North and South Extend, and then it should say sixty-second. That we're missing the actual street, that's me.
Really makes sense because we did have a Pecos Street, and then we also have a Seventy-Eighth Avenue Street. And so we have a Seventy-Eighth Street project, sorry, a Seventy-Eighth Avenue project, and we have a Pecos project. And so that's why I got confused, so thank you. And I was like, well, it looks like the others too, I'm like. And then, and then the de-appropriation, this is kind of what we talked about where you said, look, we have to have the set aside. And it's kind of like what we're talking about in parks where we have some of those parks projects that are just like, we have to have them set aside responsibly in case the trigger comes for us to spend it, but by not doing it, we acknowledge that we are kind of holding on to something that may not be spent. And so there is a potential discussion here for that opportunity loss. But that's what I thought pacing was also supposed to do. And this might be a broader conversation later, but I still don't see where pacing is fitting in to save the day like it was supposed to on this very issue of, of, of kind of like saving up for things that, you know what I mean? Like, I thought pacing was going to allow us to do a little bit of that and catch up on the run.
Nearly three million dollars in savings came from a couple of commitments that the projects just didn't advance as quickly as they, as they imagined they would this year. So, hey, great opportunity to, to de-appropriate and offset some of the pain of our change orders. The pacing effort is really the conversation we had last week on Wednesday. That's the five-year plan. Allocating out when each project hits over the next five years and twenty years because we have three hundred million dollars in project needs. So that's, that is the pacing conversation. It's how do we appropriately plan for our projects year over year so that we're living within our means?
I thought the pacing was that we were going to take out like a HELOC.
That's what I thought too.
Like, like, this pacing is totally different. What you just said is entirely different than the whole conversation of a HELOC-type use of of debt to smooth things out. And that's different than COP. And so this, I don't want to stop or slow us up because I know we're supposed, but like, this is part of my concern is that we're not very clear about. And if things have, decisions have been made differently, then what I'll do is we could go back and offline if we need to look at the former study sessions and say, help me understand the pacing that was discussed a year, year and a half ago versus today. And then also the COP versus where we are today, because I know that's confusing me. And then the consulting services, where did that come from?
And that was appropriated in our admin cost center. And we realized that we had an underspend in the admin cost center this year, so in years past, we've used that, used that money for software acquisitions, supporting supporting general operations. And because we were underspent year to date, budget identified it as, no, you're, you're not on track to spend this, let's take this off of the budget.
How much is in the admin cost center last year?
Admin cost center, I think generally that's, that's Janet and I, a couple of folks that operate in CEDs salaries. And then we've consolidated all of our training budget, but I'll let, let our experts get to a bottom line figure here.
My, our admin cost center he had last year for twenty twenty-four, that's our four million forty-nine thousand.
That's out of about a seventy-five million dollar budget for public works.
And, and, and then what is it this year?
Five million six hundred and nine thousand.
And what are you proposing in twenty twenty-six?
Should be remaining flat.
Actually, we reduce some up in twenty twenty-six, so it's a little.
So it's common for the. Just wait, I want to, before we lose, I just want to get this number. I want to get.
So next year without any, the cop safety action plan, all that being noted, that the admin cost in our twenty twenty-six is of one point for one million eight hundred.
So it's gone down four million dollars?
Yeah, so I guess, if you wanted to look at, I can get that too for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, but that included our projects for the hundred and twentieth multimodal study and comp safety action.
So one-time expenditures that won't be hitting in twenty-six.
Hard to compare year over year unless you take out the one-time expenses.
That's my challenge.
So that's what Ellie was saying, she could take those out and give you a.
I think that also is like, kind of what we're asking for parks, kind of to see, you'll have an admin cost center for the last three or four years and try to understand how that's changed over time. And when you choose like one point eight six, like that's broken down too, right? You guys have, it's not just this big chunk.
We've got dotted lines. Kelly and I are actually sitting down, I was listening to your conversation earlier immediately after this session to to get you that five-year back look by, by finding within our cost centers and or by finding cost center and give you all a clearer view of how, how our budget has changed over the last five years.
It just helps me understand that somehow we have blended in five point six million in twenty for twenty twenty-five, only spent four, which is great that we get to recover that one point five. I would, like, that's going to go back into the general fund, right?
Right in bridge.
Bridge fund because it has to stay within its own bucket. With that, okay. All right, that, these, this, and then with what you guys are working on, we'll help answer some of those other questions, so.
And the loan that we took last year, the COPs were to address four projects specifically, the four that we've been talking about this year that are under construction.
Pecos sixty-second, fifty-eighth, and York two.
Yeah, and that was a thirty-five million dollar borrow on a thirty-year term. The project smoothing or schedule smoothing effort that I described in the memo that you all received last year is this five-year planning efforts that is really trying to pace out our projects appropriately and identify opportunities for grant funding, for borrowing the HELOC that you mentioned, or whatever it is at a county scale. And understanding the, the real implications to our program of living within our means now that our fund balance is at its strategic level of fifteen million dollars.
The HELOC statement.
So making sure that we are considering all available funding opportunities, including borrowing to keep our, our capital program advancing.
Yeah, we'll need more detail because it was it was, it was like micro debt along the way, like a HELOC.
I think maybe, and tell me if I'm wrong, I think that may have been something that was proposed by the county manager and that we did not pursue. Was a different funding mechanism that was a payment over time as opposed to the COP that we decided to go with. Is that?
It was one of our options.
I'm going to go back and look. Can you guys get us the dates of that so we can go back and look at, of that discussion? I appreciate that.
Because I do remember that comparison to a HELOC discussion.
I, I know, Emma even acknowledged the same thing. We remember talking about it. We, but kind, made it akin to you using your credit card month over month, kind of getting things smooth.
Sure, that was me as well. Sorry, I don't think I was here for that, so I'm curious about.
It was, the COPs were done in place of that.
I did not get that fact.
It's an alternative source of financing. There, there are different ways of raising money. You can raise smaller amounts constantly or one amount which we chose to do to finish up the projects.
That might explain what I missed that piece, that key fact, which it was either or not both. Does help a lot. Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Next, we have the insurance fund here. So our first one, the one point eight million dollars, this is a payment to Kaiser for our twenty twenty-four claims. And then next you'll see a, the UAC premium increase, this is for three million dollars that is basically associated with new FTEs, change in land positions, and just increasing the costs for the plan.
Yeah, so it's listed as expense and revenue.
So it's neutral. The way UHC works, we payroll deduct from employees, and then the county's contribution also goes into this fund. And then we pay all of those bills out. So as we have more people take advantage of those plans and we add FTEs throughout the year and they sign up, that amount creeps up and it's not easily forecastable. So we adopt the budget and now we're going through open enrollment right now. So we're going to be wrong on January first, I guarantee it. So what we've done historically, historically, yeah, you can guarantee our budget to be wrong January first, but that's what amendments are for. We monitor all the time. Things happen. So really, it's, it's neutral because of the contributions from the employer. Paying bills, we've just seen higher utilization and more, more bills, so we have to adjust the budget to cover that.
And B and C did review this with the board at the retreat back in, back in September.
It, it is sounding familiar, just.
Uh, next, we have the open space projects fund. You'll see this is just the revenue. This is the transfer from the general fund for the public land dedication fees as needed. We'll reimburse the open space projects funds with those with those dollars. Uh, next we have sales tax. This is just catching us up. We had a, we're right sizing our transfers for the open space projects. We didn't put enough coming out of the open space sales tax fund into the projects fund, so this is just correcting, correcting that transfer that we already had into additional grants for the projects fund. And then next we have Colorado Air and Spaceport. Here you will see what we talked about before with the GPU, the ground power unit. Talking about the transfer that's going to the fleet fund as an expense, and then we're de-appropriating the approved capital project in the CASP fund right now, so that's why it's a negative one eleven. We're just de-appropriating it. And then the last entry there, this is, we're with CASP, we never, we're trying to right-size their, their projects and we finally had some agreements that were signed, their grant agreements, and so they get a finally, a final project cost. And once they have those final project costs and, and the grants established and signed off by FAA and CDOT, we go in and we adjust the budget to reflect those new dollars, because before we would just have CASP's match portion in there. And so here we find out, with this project, we found out that, or CASP did that, their match was going up slightly by eight thousand dollars, but we also didn't have the revenue, so we're adding in the one point one million dollars in grant dollars to show that we're it, it's here, it's showing, yes, we're making money of one point one million dollars, but it's the grants that were never in there before and we just had the CASP match portion in there before. So does that make sense? It's a little right sizing of their project a little bit once it's kind of finalized. And last, we just have public health. This is just the addition of some approved meetings. First one, or for two harm reduction specialist FTEs that were approved in study session back on September second. And then he, next entry is the transfer from the general fund from the comms department to public health. And so we're just, you'll, you saw the negative ninety-five thousand in the general fund and then we're just re-appropriating it in the public health fund. So it should be a revenue, right? I'm confused. Well, no, we're, we're establishing a, an expense to them. So we did, we did a negative expense in the general fund, we're doing a positive expense here, so it nets neutral overall between both funds. But this is going to be an expense to them since they are paying that, that graphics, graphic designer, so it's an expense to them. And so it's, it's not a revenue to them, it's, it's allocating a budget dollar so that they can spend it.
We didn't have to increase our contribution to that fund.
Basically, we're charging them for those services, right? That's another way of saying it. So you layering them.
Using services. Basically, we have full FTE, so they get to have the FTE.
So that expense is the only thing that we're there on. Charge back? Metaphors you could use.
And then our last slide here just shows with these budget amendment dollars, how the each of the funds affected will end up after, after they're adopted and entered into the system. So as you can see, they're all still well-positioned and they do not still have their reserve designations met, and so we do not have any concerns here. Any questions? The middle is a subtraction. Right?
Yes. Setting that aside, yeah.
Yep. Yep.
So these ending available fund balances on the right, that's all been. Moved into twenty six budget and appropriated or allocated. For whatever you needed for in twenty twenty six, okay.
I have a question for the the fifteen million, Brian, sorry to bother you again, a fifteen million, how are we spending that again? So the fifteen million is the, that's our strategic reserve in the road. So. We it's based on uh commitments that we've made. Uh so a portion of it is traffic impact fees that we can only spend on specific projects.
Oh, okay.
And then there's another portion that we just set aside for. Yeah, I'm asking, like, we're we're spending down from sixty million down to one. We're spending fifteen million this.
Fifteen is in our fund balance policy, so we've held held it here. We can't spend that.
We have to hold our reserves. We don't swing it out.
And here's what's left that's spendable is this one million.
It's over the top. Yes, I was worried about it. So we're gonna still have fifteen million if something really bad happens.
Budget according to the same thing to make sure we don't dip into that fifteen million until.
This is like how I was uh being a pain in the butt about the five million with human services like.
Yes, that middle.
About rainy or days, that's what I'm just being honest. Thank you, I'm so sorry. Doesn't this is our reservation designation. I totally get it now. Thank you so much. And then so like open space, we have eighty six million that's set aside there.
Yeah, most of that is for awards to our neighboring jurisdictions through that grant program that you guys do twice a year. Reallocate open space grants to different projects. They 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 have a. A somewhat lengthy drawdown period, so some of those are.
This is, we talked about this. This is where like Lynn brought it up too and is that we we look at that eighty six million and we need to. It's kind of like the state unclaimed property, like we need to start making phone calls. It's actually, it's actually all earmarked. It's actually all assigned to projects right now. That whole eighty six is. It's just the entities have not. They haven't met the requirements to get reimbursed for those dollars yet. Oh, they haven't met.
They haven't like this is this is door. This is all the other cities within the county that we share amongst all of our cities.
Meantime, are we making the interest on this? We do, but that interest goes right back into the fund as a pit hole.
It earns interest and goes into the fund.
Yeah.
The reason I ask is it's still like it's eighty seven million dollars. It's still not. Every year that.
You know how long it takes to build a park sometimes? I know, I just. As long as they're on their timeline and they're making progress, I do want them to have.
When we went through the carryovers and we actually did start putting pressure on some of those this year for the first time. Right? Wasn't this the first year we really kind of started to scrutinize?
Yeah, and I think there's. Please, please submit on it, maybe once a week and get your fund.
Getting every dollar their own, thanks.
Yeah, there's actually, I I just saw the next round of open space grants is coming up here real soon. I think it's in the uh. In the system right now, does he? And they actually note in there that they had to turn a couple of projects down because of the balance is already spoken for. Um so they had to just limit a couple of the the grants. So it it is all, it is all accounted for on their on their project list. It's not that it's not accounted for. The question is, it's not being activated. And so I think as dollars start to lose value, we can nudge people to get it done or abandon it. So we can use it for other things. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
He needs inflation, not that the dollars are losing value. The dollars remain the same. They just can't buy as much.
However, you wanna describe.
It's not like they're leaking. They're actually earning interest. They're just not, anyway.
So any other questions? We will hold the amendment until December.
We're getting weird. You you did good.
With there are further conversations for Road and Bridge, so we're gonna hold this whole thing until a public hearing in December. Give that a little bit of time to play out and if the Road and Bridge gets a go ahead, then you'll see this exact document in December. Mine is that one time tweet, but. Uh in December in a public hearing. And if we decide to go a different direction with the Road and Bridge, we'll peel this out, that piece out into whatever the board has directed. You'll see this coming up, not for a few weeks, but in the future.
I do have one one note uh from our team. You all did approve in study session last week, a couple of positions for the DA will probably include those as well.
Very evolving, but yes, we'll make a good point. Thank you.
Just just wanted to bring.
Is that okay if we amend that and include those?
Present this item. It's an update on the advanced mobile home parks um that we brought to you about a month ago, I wanna say.
Sounds all right. Good afternoon commissioners. Um I have just a couple of quick updates for you um on the advanced mobile home park. Um so as you all know, uh we've been working closely with advanced mobile home park um and the Colorado Poverty Lot Project. Um since the advanced mobile home park uh went up for sale and so um. We have uh been engaging the residents of the mobile home park. Um at our last meeting, October seventeenth, um we. Uh formally created the advanced residents council or ARC for short. We love our acronyms around here. Um and so the residents formally created their their board. Um they elected their board members, adopted some bylaws, um and formally brought on CPLP as their legal representatives. Um just yesterday, November fourth, uh we were on a call with Commerce City. Um Maker Housing Authority and of course the county. Um and a few things that came up uh that I think are important to highlight are that uh. You know, it it kind of came to the conclusion that purchasing the park outright at the eleven million. Uh just isn't feasible at the moment. Um but there are a few things, you know, that kind of came positively out of that, so. Um right now, uh they are focusing on Commerce City and Thistle Rock. Um we'll be working together to try to secure a three to a five million dollar subsidy um or a low interest loan to help. Um uh purchase the park to see if uh Thistle Rock can help them become a resident owned community. Um so because as of right now, um they are only one signature away from the eighty percent. Uh to be able to become a resident owned community, so. Uh they've made some excellent strides to to be able to to reach that uh achievement, so we're pretty excited for what. Um CPLP uh and the residents of the advanced mobile home park have been able to accomplish. So um with that being said, um. Right now Commerce City um has joined the conversation and is working with Thistle Rock to look into making them a resident owned community. Um we will remain engaged with the residents, so we'll continue to support them, provide resi- uh resources as needed. Um we'll continue to do outreach and be present in the community. Um the November twentieth deadline uh was the 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 deadline for the decision if if um. The county will be taking on the assignment, the ask right now of the Colorado Poverty Law Project. Is to simply let the deadline expire rather than issue a formal rejection letter. Um just so that we can kind of keep some of those deadlines moving. Um and hopefully get to the eighty percent with that one missing signature and be able to move forward that way. Yeah.
I'm so sorry. I'm gonna take a step back to the basic.
Yeah.
So the the mobile home community is called Advance.
Correct.
And it's Thistle Rock, what is what is Thistle Rock?
Uh uh it's a separate organization that helps mobile home parks become resident owned. Yeah, so Thistle resident owned community.
How much are they at? How much is the total price for to buy Advance?
Uh it was, uh so it was initially posted at thirteen million. Um but there was a complaint put in. Uh because if the if the purchaser uh bought advanced along with another mobile home park. They would get it at eleven million and so they're they 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 try to bring it down to the eleven million.
So then there's eleven million dollars for the price for that of that particular advance. And you say, uh I'm I'm thinking of a capital stack here, okay? Uh to get, how did we get to the eleven? Three to four million could come from Thistle Rock.
Uh what they're looking for is to see if Commerce City um. And I'm not entirely sure of these small details here, um but they are looking for a three to five million subsidy or low interest loan. To help Thistle Rock and the residents purchase.
From Commerce City.
Uh they're working with Commerce City.
With Commerce City, but the the park is located inside the boundaries of Commerce City.
Correct, yes, yeah, yeah.
They're trying to figure out where to get, maybe not necessarily from Commerce City.
Yeah.
But still, three to five plus three to four gets you six to nine, not up to eleven.
Um yeah, so then and then, I mean, Thistle Rock would uh support in purchasing the the park.
You're missing it, like we're not getting to the full price, is what I'm saying. How are we gonna fill that gap? So you said three to five Commerce City.
Yeah.
And you got three to four Thistle Rock.
Oh, no, 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 no. The the rest would work would be what I assume would be Thistle Rock along with the residents. To purchase the remaining amount.
I wrote down three to four million from Thistle Rock.
Oh, no, sorry, yeah.
That's my bad.
That they're hoping to work with Commerce City to identify through possibly a subsidy.
Together would cover the costs and like figure out like some sort of debt instrument.
And that's right now where. Uh we are right now. There there is no definitive plan, but that is where we are right now.
Here's my question. And we're not allowed to have a revolving loan. I'll look at Heidi, I know the answer to that. Maker Housing run a revolving loan fund for these purposes.
That's a question for their attorney.
She's giving us even letters on other things, so maybe.
Yeah, no, I I I don't mean to be flippant. I I. It's not obvious to me that they would have that authority under the law either, but I do think that that is something we would want. They do have separate counsel, separate insurance and all that, so I do think we probably want them to win. I wouldn't wanna give an opinion publicly on that.
So they're making progress towards that, assuming Commerce City helps them figure out one portion of it. Thistle Rock will cover the rest with the residents. Okay, thank you. And it expire on its own to give you more time to get that last one.
Correct, yes, yeah. So the ask right now is to not send a formal rejection letter, but rather just let the the deadline expire.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.